Buddy, welcome to a special Board of Finance Capital Plan Workshop. We'll call this meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we go to item number three in our agenda. To review and discuss Town and Board of Ed Nonrecurring Capital and Capital Projects Planning Document, their timing and related subsequent bonding requirements, an estimated impact on debt service levels over the next several years. Can I have a motion to put this before us? Ms. Charlton seconded by Mr. Dewitt. So this item is now before us. So again, welcome everyone to the working capital planning session we usually have in September. But of course, in 2020, very little is on schedule or as usually is. So here we are, December 9th is a busy time of year. So we appreciate everybody's time and effort in being here tonight. We do have a full house. Including the first select woman, we have representatives from the Board of Selectmen, the RTM, the Board of Ed, the Town, a whole list of names which I will not read because it'll take me 20 minutes. But just trust us, there's a lot of people here tonight and we thank you. So this is a meeting we have had for many years to review capital projects and nonrecurring capital. It's for us to clarify and to confirm our debt funding scenarios and to prioritize future funding needs. This meeting is about long-term planning and allocation. As most of you know, we do have a bonding policy and a policy on debt issuance which we do adhere to. And as a board, these policies do influence our decisions. And it's a reason why we're all here tonight. So before we begin, we do need to address the subject matter as it relates to project costs as listed on the Board of Ed Long-Term Facilities Plan Waterfall Schedule. As it pertains to the next 10 years, because it does affect all the information and the data that you have in front of you, including the waterfall and some of the exhibits. So the project cost projections for the Board of Ed from fiscal year 2022 and 2023 and beyond are not accurate because they have not been updated. And this information is based on a memo we received last Friday from the Board of Ed. It was titled Capital Workshop Talking Points. And the memo states just that, that the 10-year outlay of potential cost to the projects have not been updated, so they're not accurate. And the memo goes into the details why. And it's related to COVID and the issues that the Board of Ed has been dealing with over this past year due to COVID. And so they were not able to update these projections and they let us know. However, the 2021 and 2022 capital and nonrecurring are accurate. That's in the booklet and pamphlet that you have. And so we will review that. You know, it's important for us to realize, in spite of that, the direction where we are headed. Because we'll see that currently, the total cash flow required to fund the given projects for the Town, the Board of Ed, WPCA exceeds $300 million. And perhaps you saw that in one of the exhibits. And this most likely only increases as the Board of Ed updates their numbers. So at some point, some of these spreadsheets will have to be redone. And I know there are questions as well on an assumption that the Town has outlined, such as the fill pile. And that'll be addressed tonight as the CFO and I have talked about that and we will address that. So we do have a lot of projections and projects to review tonight. So we'll make this time productive. So what we'll do is as follows. We will hear from the Board of Ed. We'll discuss the 2021 and 2022 projects and the numbers as those numbers are accurate. We can review the Board of Ed projects from fiscal year 2022 and 2023 and beyond briefly if the Board of Ed would like to point anything out. But there's no need to review the numbers for the reasons just stated, unless of course, the Board of Ed would like to address some of those numbers. And we're going to need to review that at another time in the very near future. We'll then turn to the Town. We'll walk through their assumptions, exhibits and waterfalls. So we generally, the Board of Finance votes on bonding resolutions in February. So given the information that we just discussed, before the Board of Finance will vote on bonding resolutions this coming February, we're going to want to see accurate numbers for the next 10 years. As this session is about long-term planning, we need to see the effects of potential projects on our debt service levels and budgets before we just take one year into consideration. So I'd ask that the Board of Ed get us accurate numbers for 2022 and 23 forward. We can update the spreadsheets. Then we'll have time to have a follow-up discussion. Then we'll vote on the bonding resolutions for projects slated for 21, 2021 and 2022. So I suggest, and the Board of Ed can answer this, that we get those numbers updated early in 2021. And we'll add what the Town needs to add too, such as the fill pile and perhaps any work that's going to be done on the potential purchase of Giant Steps. But we're going to need to see accurate numbers before we'll vote on any bonding resolution step that will be asked to for 2021 and 2022. Okay, any questions, comments from our Board of Finance before we move on? Okay, I'm seeing none. So therefore, what I like to do, because we have plenty of people on here tonight and I probably don't see everybody on my screen. If you want to ask a question and you want to get ahold of me, please use the chat device, just in case I don't see your hand raised. And I'll be sure to call on you. Okay, so again, welcome everybody. And I'm going to turn this over to the Board of Ed. Mr. Cummings, I'll start with you and we will go from there.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Brown. We will give those numbers as requested in time for the February meeting. I'm going to ask Mr. Papa George, I believe he's on now, if he can speak to our to our requests into the projects for 2122.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. So everyone should have received, I hope, the Fairfield Board of Education Proposed Capital and Nonrecurring Project Book that we put together, it's labeled 2122. It has four projects that we're looking to move forwards with in the 2122 fiscal year, two of which are capital projects and two of which are nonrecurring projects. It is my understanding that one of the nonrecurring projects that we've listed in there has now been combined with the Town's proposal to purchase the Giant Step property. So I'm just going to really go over the three projects at this point that we're asking for, which the first one is the nonrecurring, which is the district-wide retro commissioning of the HVAC systems in all of our buildings that are handled by HVAC and fresh air systems. This proposal came up. It was something that we had spoken about in years past about putting a few schools onto our waterfall chart and moving through the schools in the district to get it completed. With COVID that came up and talks around the health and safety of the schools, we decided that instead of doing it as a district, instead of doing it as a few schools a year, we should take it on as a district project and try to get all the schools up to where they should be with air movement and checking the balancing and what our turnover rates are for HVAC equipment, how it's handling, how it's running, and get a better scope of what's out there and what is the condition of them. So that's the first project you'll see under the nonrecurring projects. The second one we'll go over is the capital project. And that is the full replacement of the Burr roof. It's a 1.542150 request. And that's to replace the failing roof at Burr Elementary School. I know we've done several roofs over the years. This one is at the end of its life cycle and we're attempting to get ahead of the program and get it replaced before we have health and safety issues within the building. After that, I'll jump over to the next one, which is a project of, my pages are sticky, give me one moment. I'm sorry, the Fairfield Ludlow High School Bathroom renovation. This is something you've seen on the waterfall chart for many years. It's been kind of pushed around and we feel that at this point, it's something that just can't be pushed out any longer. We're having constant issues with maintenance on the bathrooms. We're having water floods. We spend a lot of time with our maintenance and our plumbers up at those bathrooms, just revamping them and getting them so that the students can use them. We don't want to have to close bathrooms. So we feel it's, at this point, we can't just keep pushing it and kicking it down the road any longer. So we've worked with an architect and engineer to put a number on this project of 2.111. We did work with Colliers, who is a known owners rep here in town for many of the Town and the Board of Ed projects. Those are the projects we chose to try to limit the projects this year because we realized COVID impact on the funding for the Town. And we tried to really focus on what we thought were necessary projects to move forwards with. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions about those projects or any other questions you may have at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Papa George. Mr. Matola?
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Right. Just on the retro commissioning, just read the material. Is that, is that something that's going to be permanent? I was a little confused because you have a, on page two, you have a comment that says, "All COVID-related changes will be documented so that the system can be restored to pre-pandemic code required values in the future." So are we just doing this because of COVID? Or will this have, once we're past COVID, will this have other benefits for the buildings?
I apologize, I'm having a little difficulty hearing you. But I believe you're asking if this project is based solely on the result of the pandemic that's currently going on. And I would have to say it is not. It's something we've done about 12 to 15 years ago with some of the buildings. It was supposed to be an ongoing district project to continue and to continue maintaining. And about 12 to 15 years ago was the last time it was done. So there's been one-off schools that have been done since then, but nothing really major, which we should have been doing all along. So we're trying, we're just, this project is kind of to play catch-up to where we should be and then to move forwards, doing it with schools during the operating budget.
Okay, so this is something that's going to benefit the schools moving forward?
Correct.
Okay. And I see Mill Hill and Holland Hill aren't part of it? Is that because they're being renovated?
Correct, those are the one-off schools I mentioned. They're part of the, part of the closeout documents is a commissioning of the buildings. So there would be no reason to retrocommission those buildings at this time or recommission.
Thank you, that's all I have on this right now, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Matola. Mr. Gerber?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. I have a question about air conditioning. I just want to make sure it's the right time to ask, am I stepping out of line? My question on air conditioning is, we've always historically taken the approach that we would put in air conditioning with major renovations in our schools. And sometimes we've had major renovations in parts of schools like Fairfield Ludo or Fairfield Woods, where air conditioning would go into a section. But, you know, for example, Fairfield Ludo Ward, I don't think there's anything scheduled for putting in air conditioning at this point. So it could be 10 years or, you know, or more before those schools get air conditioning. And I kind of get the feeling that that the pandemic has sort of changed the way we should look at air conditioning. The schools that had air conditioning in all their schools, I mean, school districts that had air conditioning, were in a much better position to send kids back full-time. We're really at a disadvantage not having air conditioning in all our classrooms. And I believe that, you know, that the Town should be very supportive of accelerating, putting in air conditioning in all our schools at this point. I'm just wondering if the school district has considered moving up, you know, making this sort of an urgent priority.
I can try to answer that and then, I don't know if anyone else would like to jump on it. But I can tell you that it is something that has been on the burner for the Board of Education. We've worked, my predecessor worked on an RFP that was delayed several times, but then recently delayed with myself in the spring as well due to the pandemic. However, at this point, the RFP has been sent out. It's been filed back with, we had 10 companies submit proposals. They're in the review process now. And I actually believe a memo may have come out this evening that explained the timeline for that air conditioning project to get it onto the waterfall.
For the project, is air conditioning in every part of every school? Or is it just select schools, select parts of schools?
The RFP that went out was for the engineers to come in, evaluate the schools that do not have air conditioning or have partial air conditioning and provide to us proposals for the best way to add air conditioning to the schools that either are partial or no air conditioning. So I'm sorry, the short answer would be yes, every part of every building.
Okay, and I guess my comment then would be that in the past, you know, I think we've all, we've all understood that, you know, kids sometimes feel, you know, they're feeling faint because of the heat. You know, it's a terrible situation with teachers and students in some of the schools. You know, the weather's getting hotter each summer. It's intolerable at times. But we've always had the approach, you know, that it's too expensive to do all at once. I, you know, I don't know if people still feel that way, but that was sort of the attitude and that we do it over time. I do think the pandemic has sort of called out the urgency of having air conditioning faster, putting it in faster. And I wonder if, you know, when you consider this, you should make the pitch that we should do this like universally, like soon, within the next couple of years so that we are in a position, you know, if there's ever, or if there's still some residual issues with COVID, we're in a much better position to deal with it.
Absolutely agree.
I'd like Mr. Brown or Mr. Papa George, do you mind if I just jump in on this? Thank you. The Board may realize, have remembered from the last budget process that $100,000 was budgeted for this project to have a consultant come in and evaluate our buildings. Actually, it's been in the last two budgets. The year before last, we did not get to do this valuation because that funding was used to cover the Osborne Hill roof. As Mr. Papa George said, we moved forward last spring to get this work done. And then the pandemic kind of stopped that in its tracks. It is up and running again. And part of the delay in getting you 10-year numbers is, we really wanted to get some accurate figures on what it would cost to put air conditioning. And not only air conditioning, mechanical means of fresh air is, which is another issue in all of our buildings. In doing some of our building projects, I know that you can all attest to this. We've had to come back, or building committees have had to come back for additional funding. You know, a lot of the work that we thought was going to be done by the funding request ended up not being enough. We saw it at Roger Sherman. You know, the estimate for what the air conditioning would be in that building was much less than when it ended up being. So we really wanted to get accurate figures. A memo went out today. This was discussed in the Finance Committee meeting last week, just to get a timeline of when that work would be done. It went to the Board of Ed today. I think the Board of Finance was copied. We can get it to the other Board of Selectmen and RTM as well. We are moving forward with this. We think it is a priority. And once we get some real accurate figures, it'll be a little bit easier to plan and see how that will fit into the waterfall and what the approach the Town wants to take with this. Just judging from when we had this conversation for Fairfield Ludlow, you know, there was some discussion about whether or not that whole building should be air conditioned when the last renovation was done. And I think the price tag floated around then was about $8 million to do the whole building. And that was going back seven years. And, you know, we are concerned about equity. So if you're going to fully air condition one high school, the expectation would be that the Fairfield Ward would be soon after, which, you know, has slowed the process to some extent and might slow in the future. I think that when we get those numbers, we'll be able to have a better conversation with you and, you know, with all the Town boards. But it is, it is a priority. The pandemic definitely makes it more of a priority. Concerned about, you know, mask wearing in the, you know, in the spring when it gets a little bit warmer. And just the, you know, the health and safety was an issue before, but health definitely at the forefront when you're dealing with viruses that potentially are airborne transmission. I don't know if Peterson or Mr. Cummings had anything to add to that, but I'm happy to take any questions on that.
That's a good summary, thank you.
Okay, I'll go to Mr. Walsh and then, then Mr. Flynn and Mr. Peterson. You can comment as soon as, as we go through this, not a problem. On this discussion, not issue. Mr. Walsh?
This question is to Ms. Vitale and to Mr. Cummings, I guess separately too. Is that your highest priority? Are you going to move this to the front of the waterfall, air conditioning at every schools? And you're going to give us a number when you come back with your revised waterfall numbers, with your accurate numbers and move air conditioning to the forefront of stuff you want to do, which will then force you to move all other projects years down the way?
Well, I can't speak for the full board. It will definitely become more of a priority and we have to look at where enrollment is. Obviously, the priority is having, you know, room to educate, you know, the children of this district. I think that once Giant Steps, if that ends up moving forward, that will answer one piece of the puzzle for us in terms of a home for Walter Fitzgerald. At our last Board of Finance meeting with you, you heard about some movement happening in the district. We're seeing an increase of people moving in. There was also some people that were outplaced during this pandemic. I think that we need to, hopefully, you know, by the beginning of the next school year, we'll have a better idea of what our enrollment looks like. We were back in March before the pandemic hit. You might recall, the district was in the middle of actually reviewing our long-range facilities plan in terms of redistricting and facilities utilization. I'm not overly confident that the projections that we received, you know, back in February are still accurate. We might have to go back to Melon McBroom to get an update on that and see where we are. Mr. Peterson, I don't know if I would welcome you adding anything as another board member and...
No, I appreciate that. I mean, I think you hit it right on the head. We, it's too early to make that decision without a final number on the, you know, size and scope of the project and the enrollment we've turned about over the past couple of years. So we have a lot of interconnected questions that we will need to spend a lot of time on once, once we can catch our breath. You know, the one thing that I would add, just as a comment on the need for air conditioning, we lucked out in September with the weather. This is something that at past Capital Planning Workshops, we've had a lot of members who've come having recently been to a high school open house and come out drenched in sweat. Unfortunately, both with the combination of tents and fair weather in September. But as Ms. Vitale said, I think come May and June, it's going to, we're going to feel it again as a priority.
Mr. Cummings, what's your viewpoint on it? Is that your highest priority, air conditioning, out of everything that you have seen on your plate coming up?
Mr. Walsh, thank you for asking. I think that, I would echo the comments about seeing the whole picture. And I know that air conditioning falls under this category. But in my mind, the number one issue is always safety and security issues and how those should be addressed. You know, we kind of started that issue and some of the work that is, I'm sure you're aware of, building committees have looked at different entry plans, physical entry plans into buildings. Those are all things that I think we have to consider when we think about going forward as a school system, how to best protect the sanctity of the buildings and safety and security. So that, to my mind, it always ranks at the absolute top.
Does, is all to all three of you, does the fact that the vaccine is coming and should be pretty well disseminated by the fall have any bearing on what your plans would be for air conditioning and what type of priority would be?
Well, I could start with that. I think that while the pandemic certainly has an impact on the need for, raises an issue around the need for ventilation in the schools. When the Board first began this work, it was an air quality issue. You know, there was issues over the years with concerns around mold and air quality issues in a number of our buildings. So, so the, that was the initial impetus for the raising of the air conditioning across the schools. It wasn't just necessarily pandemic-related. So I don't know, Ms. Vitale or Mr. Peterson wants to comment on that. But that's, that I think was where this began, this journey.
I would agree with that. You know, we did hair concerns, you know, there was the heat element. But a number of our buildings concerns about air quality due to mold. I think you remember, I mean, incident at Dwight about two years ago. Fairfield Ludo High School was mentioned, you know, the bathrooms, that renovation is long overdue. You know, we had some water infiltration just from leaking pipes, you know, clog drains. When you start, you know, worrying about mold in the building, air quality becomes, you know, even more important.
Okay, so to summarize my questioning, are you going to be able to, when you give us your updated waterfall, before we bond anything further for the Board of Education, is air conditioning realistically going to be in that?
By that February date?
Yes.
I would turn it to Mr. Papa George?
I would have to say no. The, the schedule we have with the RFPs right now, put numbers on the table around the first week of July.
All right, so suffice to say, that's not going to be in this year's waterfall. It'll have to be sometime in the future, maybe next year. And then you and the Board will have to reprioritize that. And this, the Board of Finance can expect a full presentation on that and what the priority is by the next Capital Planning Session.
That would be my goal.
Okay.
I would just say, in terms of planning and air conditioning, you know, we have Jennings, Osborne Hill, Dwight Elementary School that are, well, Osborne Hill's had a renovation, but air conditioning is still part of that. But Jennings and Dwight in particular are up for renovation and air conditioning upgrades and HVAC upgrades will be part of those renovations. Those, to Mr. Papa George, I would hope that we could get some firmer numbers on those projects because they are priorities. We are pushing them back right now just because of the pandemic. So I think that we would be able to get you firmer numbers on that rather than just moving forward the cost that has been in the waterfall with an escalation. Really just trying to get as close to accurate, you know, the real numbers we can.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Gerber, for the question. And thank you for, Ms. Vitale, Mr. Cummings and Mr. Peterson for your comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, Chairman Brown.
Yeah, thanks. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of questions and they don't need to be answered this evening because I know they're going to come before our Boards for approval, but just to get them on the radar. First of all, with the retrocommissioning and the rebalancing in the 625, my question would be, is that an all-in number? Or from that testing and evaluation, is it possible that there's going to be more expense that comes with that? I know rebalancing is included, but if that... Uh, I know rebalancing is included, but if that doesn't do the trick, uh, what's a potential, um, risk there or exposure or is there any? The second item that I'm really going to want to understand when it comes before us, uh, goes to the Burr Elementary School roof. Well, it's not a brand new building. It's not an exceptionally old building. And the town has done quite well and the Board of Education, I'll give you credit, has done quite well. With maintaining a lot of our roofs and ac- actually putting in, um, plans for repairs and maintenance on roofs as they go along. So I was actually surprised to see that there was a full replacement needed uh, on that building because I don't even think that building's 20 years old. I get, I think the number 15 years has been thrown around. So I'd really like to understand what happened there and have we exhausted all our, um, all, all our options versus our warranties and et cetera with the Burr Elementary School roof? So that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. And Mr. Dewitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Kristewitz. Mr. Flynn brought up one of my points. So what I do every year is I look at last year's waterfall and I look at this year's waterfall. There's nothing on last year's waterfall for Burr. Except for a warranty in 2024, 2025. So, um, that's, that's, that's major for me. I, yeah, I really want to understand how a hundred, uh, 1.5 million dollars shows up. But I want to address Mr. Walsh's question. Because I think we're, we're missing the process here, right? It's very frustrating to me that we're only talking about one year. Because the process here is, you know, when, when any town body comes before us and says, I want to do something that's more than, you know, that has a substantial number, I pull out these waterfalls. I think everyone in our board does. They should not change that much year over year. Yes, things happen. I get it. But let between last year and this year's waterfall for the Board of Ed, I mean, it's significantly different. So I'm frustrated with this one year number and we're, we're, you're going to solve that in February or, or as, as Mr., as the chairman said, we're, we're, we just won't vote. But it's, it's just so crazy different from last year. I, I don't really understand. So just to address my first question, where, where did Burr come from, the follow up on Mr. Flynn's question?
Can I answer that? I, I'd like to say, I'd like to just point out that I could not agree with you more. The, one of my biggest concerns with the waterfall chart moving forwards and something I pointed out is you'll see that there is not a single roof replacement on there. There's no roof replacements. There's no boiler replacements. There's no elevator replacements. The waterfall chart, as I sat before you guys last year and explained that, in my feeling is there is a lot of missing information, a missing data and inaccurate numbers. My goal when I took on this position was to update that waterfall chart and make it more inclusive and make it more accurate to costs and projects needed for this district. Unfortunately, due to pandemic and most outside vendors who we work with closing down and not responding for periods of time, it delayed that process quite a bit. And then when the summertime, when we were getting ready that we could actually start doing this stuff again, we turned our focus to reopening and getting kids back into the buildings. So that process that I had hoped to get done in this last year has been delayed significantly. And I do apologize for that. My goal has always been to present to the, this board, the most up to date and accurate waterfall that we can.
Last year's waterfall, Mr. Papa George, 2023, 1.38 million dollars to roof project for Sherman. 2324, 1.409 million for Osborne Hill. 2024, 2025, one, 1.02 million dollars for Mill Hill.
Yep. Those, and those were ones that were, I, I stand corrected. You are correct. They did have some roofs in the waterfall chart. It doesn't address all of them. It addressed some that were on the radar for construction and projects. So that's why they were put in there because they knew they were coming up. There was never actually an evaluation done of all of our roofs to look at the condition of all of them to figure out what should be the priority, where should be, we be going. Those roofs that were put in there were based on the fact that there were projects coming up for those buildings.
Again, um, it's, 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 it's an issue. I mean, because even, so in the, the, the plan you gave us to, to look at 2022, 23, now all of a sudden McKinley's need a new roof. So it's changed dramatically. So I just want everybody to understand the process. At least as I see it, this is a long-term document that I personally look at when I'm going to, when I'm going to look at any long-term projects. And by the way, you got a couple really long-term, like a $20 million project at Dwight and 24 million at Jennings. So I don't think these are really being taken seriously. They are really, really important to us. So I, I just wanted to say that going forward that these, these, these are not optional, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Not optional going forward. That's, that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Dewitt. So, Mr. Papa George, what I think I hear you saying, how, how long have you been in, in the position that you're in?
This April will be my second anniversary, this coming April. So approximately a year and a half just over.
So you took a look at the waterfall that was handed to you and you want to basically redo it. You want to update it. You want to change your priorities. And so therefore it's not going to be, um, similar to years past. So what we need though, is, is we need you and to, to get that before us. Your priorities, the way you see the next 10 years, so that we can, um, so that we can address it in February and, uh, we can vote on the bonding resolutions with the understanding of what your priorities are for the next 10 years. Right? So you're, you're, so would, 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 am I correct in saying that what was handed to you? You disagreed with and you're looking to change your priorities and, uh, basically redo the waterfall? Maybe not everything, but a majority of it.
I think what was handed to me had some shortfalls in it that we've recognized and that we want to correct so that we can present to the town the most accurate picture possible.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, I, thank you. I, thank you. Uh, I just wanted the opportunity to, to respond to, to your question and also to Mr. Dewitt's concern. When Mr. Papa George first and I began kind of together in our roles, one of the things we did that first summer was to look at that waterfall project, the, the list, kind of historic list. And he began to me all the number of concerns that kind of pretty much ran through the list. It was our, a mutual agreement at the time that, um, if we're going to put our name behind something, that we wanted the most accurate numbers that we, and based on his ex- experience, um, we were not at all comfortable with that. I remember speaking with board leadership around this issue and there was agreement across, uh, all of us that, um, we needed to, 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 um, give a best accurate representation to the town. The town deserved that. So, uh, our, our plans were messed up, everything that happened in this past year. And as Mr. Papa George said, we are sorry for that, but we, we are committed to giving you the best numbers going forward because again, our name is up behind them. So um, I just wanted to speak to Mr. Papa George's integrity around this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Mr. Dewitt, you have a follow up?
Yes, yes, thank you. I am in no way, um, contesting Mr. Papa George's integrity. Uh, I think he's doing a great job. Um, there's none of that. And I, I also, to a certain degree, can understand why you don't know if this roof is going to cost 1.4, 1.5 or 2.4 because you can't get a, a supplier out there or a vendor out there to look at it. I get it. My concern is when, a year ago, when the most important roof in the whole town was McKinley and now it's gone. So the dollar, the dollar numbers, I'm with you. They can change. I'm totally with you. I just think that we should know that McKinley roof got to be replaced before Brewer roof and before Tomlin's. I, I totally get it. And just to throw two cents on the, the air conditioning, we've, we've had that discussion ad nauseam. I mean, I know I'm supporting, I'm supporting the air conditioner. I don't care if we're, if we're putting it in, you know, ward, whether, whether we're doing a renovation or not. I mean, I think that's COVID or not, that's, that's one of our priorities. It must have, much to Mr. Walsh's point, it needs to be on here and needs to be prioritized upfront if that's what you want to do next. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dewitt. Mr. Gerber, you had a comment?
Yeah, just, just, just a follow up comment. Um, uh, number, number one, I just want to point out, and I know everyone knows this, that, uh, in terms of safety, you know, there's been a lot of discussion in the, in, in the past about air conditioning being a safety issue. God forbid, any of our schools ever have to go on lockdown, um, to do that if it's 100 degrees, uh, in, in the classroom with windows closed and doors closed is a safety issue. And the other point I wanted to make, and I hope, you know, at least it would be considered. I think, uh, Mr. Dewitt just, I'm not sure where, where he stands on this, uh, but, but I don't really think of the air conditioning at this point. I think it's important enough that it shouldn't be either or. I believe air conditioning has, has, has become so important, um, because of, of health and now that, that including COVID recently, that it should be done as soon as possible without reprioritizing. Like the urgency of like, you know, when a school has mold, you know, that, that sort of urgency. And maybe other people won't look at it that way. That's the way I look at it. I think a lot of parents, uh, in the school district would agree with me. We shouldn't be moving renovation projects out because we're putting in air conditioning. We should be doing both because it's that important at this point. That's, that's my view. I believe a lot of people agree. Maybe people on the Board of Finance don't. And I, and hopefully, you know, we'll get more information about air conditioning soon.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Gerber. Uh, Ms. Fostilly, you have a comment? You're, you're on mute. You're still on mute.
I was double muted. My apologies. Better than not muted enough. I just wanted to echo, uh, Mr. Gerber's concerns. I mean, I, I think that we're at a point where we almost might see like no snow days and heat days instead. Like, I don't know if we're tracking the temperature inside these buildings. But years ago, when my, my son was in first grade, his teacher was, um, pregnant and due like a couple of weeks after school ended and it was really just a difficult situation. It was really hot and that was, you know, 13 years ago and it's only gotten warmer. So I do think we need to figure out a way to, um, to make air conditioning a priority. Cause you know, we can't, we can't really have, we, we're trying not to have windows open for safety reasons, although that's different now with COVID. But I, I do think that it was already a safety issue before COVID and this has just made it, you know, compounded everything. That's it. Thank you.
I, I think we lost Mr. Brown for a second. Well, that's good because I wanted to comment anyway. Um, Kristewitz, Vice Chairman, um, we're all saying the same thing about air conditioning. When I say prioritize, I mean, I don't, listen, it's important. It's got to go on the waterfall. Mr. Gerber, it's not, oh, let's make it a priority. No, it's got to go on the waterfall. This is a long-term planning document. If you want to, you want to prioritize it, I'm all for it. My point is it's got to go into this document. And your comment about, well, we have a lot of things we should do. What are, well, what we have to do as a board is we have to make sure that we're not killing the town the next two years with every other thing that's coming along the line. And if, if you wanted to hang your hat on the waterfall we've got tonight, we spend 4.5 next year and then we go to 28 and 29. So we're going to have to figure that out. So my only point is that it's got to be on this waterfall, whether we all think it's a priority or not. So.
Mr. Dewitt, totally agree with you, Christine Vitale, Chair of the Board of Education and, um, looking forward to getting the consultant to come in and give us some real numbers. So we're just not guessing what those numbers would be.
Agreed. Oh, Mr. Jim Brown's back. Go ahead, sir. I took over for you for a few minutes.
I appreciate that. I'm back at another PC. So, okay. Any further questions on the capital non-recurring projects for 2021, 2022? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Mr. Papa George, since you are going to basically redo the war, the long range facilities plan, the waterfall schedule for the next 10 years. Okay, this, this, I'm assuming there's not much to go over with this chart, but if there's anything you'd like to point out to us, uh, please do.
Correct. Um, I don't think there's much to point out at this point. I don't want to share much at this time because I would like to, the opportunity to share it with board leadership and the Board of Ed prior to putting it out to public.
Okay, thank you. Do any, I just, I'll give the opportunity if any board members or RTM, Board of Selectmen have any questions on that document? I agree. We'll wait till the new one comes out and we look forward to seeing that in, um, in February. Okay, thank you very much, uh, Board of Ed. We're going to turn over to the town. Mr. Schmidt. Ms. Kupchak, good evening.
Good evening. Uh, I was just, uh, the way we're going to do it is I'm going to just go over a little like the first two, um, slides and then, um, Mr. Flynn is going to come up and then, um, Mr. Schmidt can also jump in and Mr. Bremer. I just want to first off by saying thank you to these gentlemen for their work, um, working on this for the last, what, couple of months now, uh, meeting and working with our department heads to come up with this list. And so, uh, we'll just start off with the first slide. I have our packet that we sent to PowerPoint. So obviously critical infrastructure, we have existing and potential deficiencies throughout the town that could threaten our general health and safety. Uh, the routine maintenance and improvements, existing or potential deficiencies, uh, could result in more limited, uh, harm to individuals in our property. Uh, timely maintenance and improvements are essential to sustain Fairfield's existing quality of life. Improve appearance, add to our overall character and, uh, it's essential that we continue to make these kinds of investments to move our town forward. So these are the three sort of categories that we put them into, the critical infrastructure, the routine maintenance and improvement, and then the modernization service and functionality, uh, sort of category. And the next slide, we just talk about the town infrastructure. There's been a little concerted effort to, to really invest in our town assets over the past 20 years. This has resulted in substandard conditions for town employees and town residents. As evidenced by, if you flip to the back, you know, we've got some interesting pictures of Old Town Hall with, uh, complete with even mushrooms growing in the tax assessor's, uh, office in the carpet. Uh, by, um, through this working group, the town has established a robust list for discussion, input and prioritization. By establishing this framework, the town can assess which projects require immediate authorization, but also those that should be pri- prioritized to move the town forward. And so now I'm going to hand those to Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, Madam First Selectwoman. Good evening, everybody. It's good to be with you again. Before I get started, I'd like to send out some thank yous. Uh, Mrs. Kupchak mentioned Mr. Bremer. I worked very closely with him over the past, uh, four months or so to put together what I would call a working document. This is truly for discussion purposes. Also worked closely with Connie Saxel from the Finance Department. She did a lot of the number crunching behind the scenes and I'd like to thank Connie as well as Jared came in and helped put it to bed here as such as it is over the last, uh, couple of weeks. So thank you, Jared, for your hard work. And I want to send, uh, um, my thank yous as well to the department heads. When Tom and I started this discussion, what became evident, uh, early on was that this was an exercise in change management as well as a financial and a planning exercise. The change management had to come about because for years, the way the town had been presenting their projects and their needs. their projects and their needs was really based on what they thought they could get approved versus what the true needs of the town were. That resulted in a lot of the information that was presented to the boards to be lacking in terms of clarity or completeness. Tom and I, working very closely with the department heads, tried to break that logjam. Because as you are all aware, the whole purpose of this discussion this evening is not just long-term planning, but to provide a context for the decisions that we'll all have to make over the next two, three, four years, however long we serve. And without having that context and knowing the bigger picture, it's very hard to know whether we're doing the right thing or the wrong thing by approving certain projects. Working closely with the department heads, we were able to put together that more fulsome list of what was happening with town buildings. The other thing that became evident was that for the past number of years, and I'm not casting aspersions at any administration, we're saying how many years that was. But what was evident was that we were in a very reactive mode on the town side. Now, I'm sure some of that was because we were doing heavy investment on the education side, and we were trying to balance the needs and the debt load of the town. But we weren't proactively maintaining the town buildings. And some of these buildings, such as Old Town Hall, is obviously historic, and not only adds to the character and charm of, of the town, but can really go downhill quite quickly if not maintained. We don't even know, in many of these instances, what that means. We don't know, in many instances, how bad some of these buildings may be. We don't have the people on staff right now or the resources available to evaluate what the prioritization and critical need items are in all circumstance. So part of what we need to do is actually embark on that study and engage some professionals to come in here to help us evaluate the critical needs, help prioritize those needs, and then start planning to get those addressed. And there is money included in these planning documents relative to those studies, but much like the Board of Education, the studies themselves are incomplete right now, and we need more information. Which leads me to my next point. We're going to talk a little bit about numbers. We're going to talk about the study that we're in the midst of. These numbers are directionally correct, directionally. They're not exact. In fact, I can tell you for one thing, that these numbers are not going to be right. They're not going to be right because of what we just heard on the Board of Ed side, and they're not going to be right because we don't have all the information to make the best informed decisions for some of the town buildings right now. In addition, we have this big thing sitting out there called the fill pile. That too is probably going to draw on some of our bonding capacity and some of our needs. And much like the other unknowns, that is also an unknown until the state and the various agencies complete their work, and we know what those remediation efforts might look like. That being said, we do have a picture of where this is heading, and I'd like you to turn to page three or four. It's labeled the debt service as a percentage of the budget on a historical basis. If everyone would turn to that PowerPoint. So our average debt service payments per year are about $25 million, $26 million over the last eight to 10 years here. As a percentage of the budget, it's about 8.73% overall. Now, you will all recall that credit rating agencies, town advisors, and everybody has advised, advised us that you'd like to keep your debt percentage below 10% of your overall operating budget per year. Your debt service cost should be below 10% of your budget, and we'd like to maintain that. So for the last 10 years or so, the average is 8.73%. And that's while we absorbed all the spending and the investment in the schools. I don't remember how many school projects we've had to do to either build schools, do additions, or do renovations. And as we heard tonight, we've got a couple more on tap. Turn to the next page. The next page is the existing projects. It's the projects as a percentage of the budget that we know about, that are included in here. And remember, the Board of Education needs to update their numbers, fill pile needs to be added in here, and we've got additional town items that are sure to come. With this, we're staying at about 8.77% over the next 10 years. However, you will notice that in several years, even without adding in for these projects that we were just talking about, we come dangerously close to these, that 10% marker. So for those that think that we should try to do everything at once and that we shouldn't push things back, I have to disagree based on these numbers. Based on these numbers, we're going to have tougher, tough decisions to make relative to timing, prioritization, as well as some projects that probably get pushed beyond this timeline. And it's going to get even worse once we add in the projects we talked about. If we were to manage it and try to stay about where we are now, if you turn to the next page, we would be looking at about $30 million. This had some assumptions relative to the growth rate of the budget over the next 10 years, but you can see the difference in this chart on, on that page versus the prior chart. This is what we're faced with in terms of management. Next page. You can see just now the comparison of our outstanding debt. 74% goes towards education. $3 million goes towards clean water and sewers, and the rest is general, which for purposes, let's throw that into town and infrastructure. So you can see very clearly just by this pie chart what's happened over the last 10 years as we haven't invested as much as is necessary on the town side and as we've invested in the Board of Ed's side. Mrs. Kupchak had given us the examples of the Tuxus Hill Garage. I encourage you to take a look at those, take some tours of it, take a look at the heavy-duty machinery for DPW and some of our other town departments. Look at our bridges. Look at some of the bridges in town. These things are not optional. And my understanding from prior presentations is that at certain points, if bridges aren't addressed, the state will come in and will have bigger issues, as I recall. Look at Old Town Hall. That's that historic building. Mushrooms growing in your town hall, really? It's not something we should be proud of, and it's something that's going to need to be addressed. So we've got a lot of work cut out for us. There's going to be a lot of difficult choices to make. We don't have all the information tonight. We're not going to have all the information until we get the study that the Board of Education was talking about, as well as the study that we're advocating for on the town side to really help us understand what's going on with our town buildings. That being said, you do have directional information in front of you that totals almost $320 million in investment over the next 10 years. In this schedule, at least on the town side, it does not have the fill pile information. It does have $400,000 for that study. It does have the Water Pollution Control Authority, the investment there. That project we've been talking about for years and years, it's coming right at us. As town bodies, I will alert everybody or remind everybody that we're going to have funding decisions made, to be made on that. And that's not going to be an easy discussion. It's going to be versus ratepayer, versus taxpayer, or a combination of both. But that's something that's also staring us in the face as we move forward. We do have cost of living adjustments in here on the town side of 3% per year, and I probably stole Jared's thunder a little bit. But, you know, we've got a tough road to hold. I'll take questions on my overall work with Mr. Bremer, if he would like to come up or help answer, and then we can turn it over for a more fulsome discussion of, of some of the near-term projects. So I thank you for your time and your attention so far.
All right, thank you, Mr. Flynn. Thank, appreciate the presentation. Are there any questions on, any discussions that we've just had in regards to the PowerPoint? Mr. Testani?
Thank you, Mr. Jack Testani. Hello, Tom, how are you?
Hey, Jack, how are you?
Good, good. Just a quick question. I wondered if you had any updated info on, on approximate cost on the fill pile? I know I've heard some numbers sort of, you know, extemporaneously. I just didn't know if you or Jared or perhaps the First Selectwoman had anything more concrete and what any potential lawsuits from the previous administration's dealings may help us in the future in terms of recovering money.
So a, a couple of things. Number one, I don't have any additional information on what the fill pile costs are. The extemporaneous numbers that you had referenced earlier, to my knowledge, were, were made as part of a filing requirement, but they have yet to be updated based on better available information. And looking around the table here, none of my colleagues have any additional information at this time. And I also think, given that there are several ongoing lawsuits, I don't think it'd be appropriate to discuss that in, in public, perhaps a private session separately, but that's going to be a, a longer term incident, and I hope that helps, Jack.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Matola?
Hey, John.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Hey, Tom, good seeing you again. On, on the fill pile, I know traditionally over the years when we've done these charts and so on and so forth, it, you know, we, we wouldn't know maybe the price of something, but we would put a number in there as a placeholder. How come we didn't do that for the fill pile?
We actually, we actually just wanted to highlight it, John, the fact that it is the great unknown right now. So it was more of a talking point, because really it could be any number of numbers. So as opposed to an educated guess, this would really be a swag. Okay?
Gotcha.
So we wanted to highlight.
Thank you. Thanks. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Mr. Duett, and then Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Selectman Flynn, for the data. I, I want to thank you for, for the data, especially, especially the bar charts, you know, being an engineer. It's, it's good to see these kind of charts, because it gives us a guideline, right? And, and that's what I was kind of elaborate. I, I didn't do it as eloquently as you did on, on the Board of, on the Board of Ed's side, but, you know, there's a goal to shoot for here, and the goal is less than 10%. And if, if these kind of charts help us, you know, smooth the way over, it, it's, it's very much appreciated, so thank you for that.
So, Mr. Duett, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that Jared did the bar charts. I just spoke to him.
Well, well, thank you, Mr. Schmidt, then. Don't let Flynn take all your glory.
All right, thank you. Is that, is that all you had, Chris? Okay, thanks, Mr. Duett. Mr. Walsh?
Hey, John. Yeah, I think we need a, yeah, back to this placeholder thing. I mean, we, we've done placeholders on many things when we don't have numbers for years in the, in, in capital plan. And I think a number has to be put in there. I would go conservative with that number. I think the most conservative you number now, you provided already on a filing, it was five to $10 million. The $10 million number should probably be in there until we know something else.
I think that's fair.
So I think we need to put, you know, without any more knowledge of what that's going to be, I think a $10 million placeholder should be put in soon.
Can I just dovetail off that, Mr. Chairman?
Well, wait just a second. Can we have, the CFO would like to comment on that, please?
We will add that in. There are clearly going to be other versions of this document and these documents based on updated figures, and so we are committing to add that into there at the $10 million rate.
Thank you very much. And I mean, you could put in parentheses placeholder, so that it doesn't, you know.
We, hopefully, by the time, Jim, I'm hoping by the time we have to redo this document or when we start redoing the document, or when Jared starts redoing the document, maybe we'll have some additional information from the state, and it'll be a more educated number. And maybe not.
We're going to be seeing a new version of this in February. Am I missing something, Mr. Brown?
That, that is correct, Mr. Walsh. That's correct. Not, not, and not just from the Board of Ed, Board of Ed, but from the town as well. Thank you. Mr. Testani, you had something to add?
I just wanted to dovetail off what Mr. Walsh was saying, and we're all sort of in agreement, it sounds like, that a $10 million was kind of the figure in my head, which is why I asked that question of Mr. Flynn about, did we have a cost? And using it in the form of a placeholder, I think is a, is a great idea, so that at least we have something sort of allocated, for lack of a better word, for the potential costs, anyway, for the fill pile.
That, that's very fair, as long as we're in agreement that that is a guess, and that when we get into whether it's $5 million or $15 million later on down the line, God forbid it be $15 million, we don't get into discussions where, why did we put in $10 million and it's $15 million? We just have to realize if we settle on a $10 million number, that's all it is, and that's fine.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Testani. Any further questions for Mr. Flynn in regards to his PowerPoint? Mr. Gerber?
Yeah, I, I have a, a quick question. I should note that it's probably just the way it's presented, but, you know, traditionally, would you ever consider, or would Board of Finance ever consider bonding over 30 years for certain types of assets, like the, you know, the bridges or the south fence and, you know, pump station? Or is 20 years something that's required by the rating agencies?
Mr. Flynn?
No, go right ahead. Please.
20 years, it would be our limit, our max as, as a board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gerber. Any further questions on the PowerPoint? I, I assume what we're looking at with these bridges, first of all, a question, do we get, does the state reimburse us for bridges at all?
Yes. Yeah, there is some formulas, Jim. I think it depends on where. I'm going to turn it over. Are there any questions for me before I sit down? Or I can turn it over to the CFO?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, just, I think there's one question.
Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, Mr. Flynn, thanks for, and, and Mr. Schmidt, and I, Mr. Bremer, I guess. We're putting together some of the PowerPoint presentation. One of the documents that's always, we always look at every year when we do this is the, the debt service as a percentage of the budget, because that's what we all try to manage to. And that's kind of the problem with prioritizing all the projects all at one time. I mean, you know, in a perfect world, I guess, every single project in the entire town, we'd fix every building this coming year, and we'd do every, all the air conditioning and all the projects. But we just can't fiscally. It would destroy our budget, and it would probably, it would, it would cause our credit rating to go down, because this is such a thing that credit agencies look at. So I just think we got to be careful. We, and that's why we do manage it, and we've been managing to that number of staying under 10%, and why this is such an important tool. So forward, I think that's why, you know, we all, I know the Board of Ed is really good about doing that, and the town is, and I think we just got to continue to do it. And that's why I think we rely on the Board of Ed to prioritize their priorities.
Hey, Jim, it's Tom, and, and I couldn't agree more with what you just said, which is one of the reasons why I think we need to is one of the reasons why I think we need to complete this study on the town side and be a bit more proactive because I think when we're dealing with buildings that have been neglected in such a way as they have been and maybe infrastructure, um, we need to get that study done so that we know what the priorities need to be and what can be pushed off. So I, I couldn't agree more with what you said. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flynn.
It was great to be with you guys tonight. Thanks for having me.
And welcome, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to be here. Uh, to the ques- the question I was asked was about bridges. There is reimbursement for bridges, uh, under various programs. And, uh, depending on the program, we'll, uh, determine how much the reimbursement is. There's a, a lot that program which is ha- has to do with the regional transportation, regional, uh, uh, transportation investment. Um, and so, and as you, as we go through these and you look at the programs, you, you can see where there, uh, where there's reimbursement or not. So as you, as you look at the individual bridge programs, you can see that whether or not there's reimbursement to go along with it.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Schmidt, what ex- where are you going to lead us now? From the PowerPoint to what exhibits would you like us to review with you?
Let me, I'm going to pick up where Mr. Flynn left off, uh, talking about some of the assumptions. And then I'll just work my way through and I'll give an overview of each of the, the, uh, backup documents. And I'll let you know before I, before I start with one, which one I'm on, so everybody can follow along. Um, so in the assumptions, uh, Mr. Flynn covered some of them. We talked about fill pile. We talked about the $400,000 in, in, uh, that we're looking to in, in best, uh, so that we can figure out what the state of the town buildings are and, you know, kind of get an audit of, uh, what needs to be done. And so for that, there's a placeholder amount of $5 million that's in here. Uh, we have, the, the waterfall covers the, uh, WPCA, covers Board of Education and the town, obviously with any future changes, these documents are going to change. There is, uh, there's a summary sheet, uh, a summary spreadsheet, and there are placeholders at the end of that, just because as we got, as we get further and further off, now you'll see that the number of proj- the number of identifiable, identifiable projects start to diminish. So in the, uh, last three to four years, you'll see placeholder amounts that we put in there, um, just to acknowledge that there are going to be additional costs. But, uh, as of now, we don't, we don't have any idea, uh, what those would be precisely. We added 3% cost of living to certain projects. So if there was a project that was on the list in the past, uh, to acknowledge that the cost of that project going forward, uh, has probably increased. And so we add an amount of 3% to each of those projects. And so that covers the, uh, the assumptions that we used.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt, if you could just, uh, give me a moment, please. There's questions on the assumptions that I, some board members have. And I'll start with Mr. Matola.
Uh, thank you, everyone. Um, uh, and this may be a legal question or maybe a question for Mr. Brown or Jared, also you. On the, um, the WPCA capital project where you indicate on your assumptions that there'll be funded through general obligation bonds, a portion of the related debt service amount to be determined will be paid by WPCA rate payers. Who, who decides that percentage? Is it the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen? Is it, uh, how, how does that work? Do we know? Does anyone know?
That, it is a good question. And I don't know, le- legally, I'm not sure what the process would be, uh, for doing that. And we're, a- as we get better numbers on this and we know how much more the, how much this project or these projects are going to cost, we're going to start looking at that and looking at what's an equitable way to, uh, distribute the burden, whether it's on the rate payers of WPCA or the taxpayers more generally. Um, I don't know, uh, Mr. Paul went on. I don't know if he has any more insight into.
You don't, we, we, if, if you don't know the answer, that's okay. I don't, I don't mean to pin you down right now. I was just curious about that and, um, and, and maybe I thought some of our board members might know off the top of their head, but, uh, I'm just throwing that out there. Um,
Yeah. No, it's a, it's a good question. We'll, uh, we'll give an answer to that.
Uh, John, can I help? Um, John, I think it's Tom. Um,
Hey, Tom.
We looked at this a number of years ago and it, it's worth a refresh to look at it. But when we looked at it a few years ago, it was noted that it would be all three bodies. Um, so it'd be Board of Select, Board of, Board of Finance and RTM. But I think it should be reviewed again.
All right. Thank you. I remember talking about it a few years ago. Every, everything blends together. So, been around a long time. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions on the assumptions? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Schmidt, uh, where to next?
Let's go to exhibit one. Uh, exhibit one is what, I believe it's titled the summary, the capital plan summary. And it's a spreadsheet that has it, it's blocked off into three different categories. There's the, there's Board of Education, the town, WPCF, and then the grand total at the bottom. Uh, this is fairly self-explanatory. The not, I think the, uh, the things to point out are the, you can see the totals for each of the categories all the way to the right. Board of Education is at 69 million over the 10 years. The town is at 106 million in capital needs. And the, uh, WPCF is 83 million. So the grand total, uh, was, is $311 million and change, as Mr. Flynn had alluded to earlier on. And to, you know, just to give you a little bit of context in, uh, regard to the PowerPoint presentation, wh- as we were looking at these, uh, at these projects and they were coming to us from the, from the different departments, the, the question I had was, you know, may, maybe we can afford this. Maybe over, over time, we can afford this. And so I had asked the, uh, at that point, I asked the financial advisor who actually did this spreadsheet to do the, uh, do an anna- do a, basically a capacity analysis, uh, which was limited to the amount of debt service, uh, related to the overall budget and limited it to the amount that is, uh, projected to be for this year, which is 8.43%, sometimes ground to 8.45. Um, so that's, that's where, that's how that came about. So I asked him to say, let's keep that rate and over the next 10 years, how much would we be allowed to borrow each year? And so if you, if you smooth it out, it's about $30 million a year. And that keeps us, with the exception, there's one year where it peaks over the 8.43%, just slightly. Um, but there, uh, for the most part, it, it's underneath that level each year. I just, I just wanted you to hear that for, uh, for the background and where that number came from. Are there any questions on, on this page?
Well, on W, uh, Mr. Schmidt, on WTCF, can you just review those numbers? I mean, where did, where, where do these numbers come from and how were they broken out?
And I'm sorry, what sheet is this, Jim? I kind of lost.
This is exhibit one.
Exhibit one. Uh, there should be a, a breakout of these projects. Uh, maybe it was, that might have been left out. I may have to follow up and email to you. There is this, it's a short sheet of the number of projects, uh, related to this. That gives a little bit more detail on what's, uh, what each of the projects are. There's about, there's about nine different projects.
Okay. Yeah, we did not receive that. So you'll have to, you'll have to send that to us.
I'll send that to you. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Walsh?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, Mr. Schmidt, I appreciate that. I appreciate you having, um, I think it's Phoenix Advisors, um, tell us how much we could probably do a year. Um, but I'll tell you, it, it's very interesting that it, it shows, I think over the last couple of years, why we need to keep flexibility and not do $30 million a year. Because it was only a couple of years ago that we stumbled onto the fact during a regular Board of Finance meeting, that Mr. Flynn chaired, actually, that all of a sudden we were going to have to do 40 to 60 million dollar rehab to our water pollution control facility. That came out of like nowhere. It wasn't on any waterfall chart, despite some people in the town knowing about it. Now we have another $10 million that all of a sudden just popped up because of some contamination at the fill pile. You know, eh, these numbers change drastically and can change drastically. And it's kind of why eh, we can't get too close to the edge because we just don't know what's around the corner. We always got to keep some of our credit line available for things we don't see coming and can't predict. So in going forward, I think it's just something to remember, um, as we get closer on, um, getting closer to the max, uh, because otherwise we're going to be over it. And it could be something that none, no one on this call, no one in town hall knew about. And we wake up two weeks from now and we're told there's another $20 million project because of some reason. So I just want to point that out. It's kind of, uh, kind of like a family budget where you kind of need to keep some money in the bank and not just spend all your money down to zero every month. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Mind if I respond, Mr. Chairman? Thank you. Uh, and, and that's a fair point. And, um, you can pick different ranges and we could give him, uh, different scenarios to run, different, uh, different percentages to run. I picked that because it was the, I picked the 8.43 because it was, it is what it is this year. And it's slightly lower than it's been over the last eight or nine years. Um, and then it still gives us that cushion even if you do, so this,
Yeah.
this amount assumes the, assumes the amount for WPCF as well. So that, that is already in here and it assumes that it, it all gets bonded, uh, with GO bonds. That's, that's baked into these numbers. And so that, uh, assuming that you could get the, uh, WPCF within 30 million a year, it, it can be done with and still, uh, keep it under that threshold of 8.43 million, 8.43%. So, uh, eh, so it's below the 10%, which if, if that, I guess it depends on what your, what your threshold is and what your cap is in your mind. And so there is, there is still some cushion there to your point. Um, and it's, you know, impossible for us to predict any other, all the projects that are going to come up or any emergencies. But, uh, that's what we attempted to do.
So, yeah, Mr. Schmidt, I would, I would point out, um, I'd ask us all to look at that number, $311 million. That's a big number. Okay, it's a lot larger than it has been, uh, in the past, mainly because of WPCF. We also don't know what the Board of Ed is going to come back with. And we don't know what the town's going to come back with, you know, given the, given the PowerPoint that you just presented. So I would say we're getting pretty close to the, to the edge of perhaps our, you know, our willingness to borrow much more than that. So we'll, we'll see, we'll see how it turns out as we get these new spreadsheets and we get information that's been updated, we'll have a clearer picture. But this, just, just so, you know, people that have been on, on the board for a while, that 311 million is more than we've seen and, and we're not done yet. Um, any fur- any questions, uh, Mr. Testani?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey, Jared, how are you?
Good, Mr. Testani. How are you?
Good, good. Just a quick, just a quick question. Um, in that exhibit one, there happens to be a line for a placeholder amount since we were talking about placeholders earlier. I'm just curious, you might have touched on it and I apologize if I missed it. Wh- what does that represent? $7.8 million?
Uh, can you tell me where, where you're looking?
If you look in that exhibit one, um,
I, I, yeah, I can explain that to you. Um, basically, when the, uh, financial advisor ran the, ran the, uh, projection for us, he had the last, uh, just because they're, they're so unknown, the last four years were tailing off a bit at, uh, 20 million and 15 mil- so 20 million for, uh, year seven and eight, and then 15 million for nine and 10, the total. So what I did is I took the known, the known projects, the identified projects, and I just subtracted those from the, uh, the 15 or 20 million that's in the total and backed my way, I backed my way into a placeholder amount. You see that? So there's, so if the amount was, if the amount in, uh, in 27 is 20 million total, I took the identified projects and I subtracted those from 20 million. And that's how I came up with the placeholder amount.
Which would be the 16 million. Is that, am I reading that right?
That's right.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay.
Well, in 27, that would be 7.89 million. In, in tw- you're right, in 28, it would be 16.
Right. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions on this exhibit one? Okay, moving forward, Mr. Schmidt, exhibit two?
Let's go to exhibit two. Exhibit two is the, uh, the list of projects, list of town projects, uh, by year. Uh, I know we have, I believe we have all the department heads on. So if you have, uh, specific questions about projects, then, uh, they're, they're probably better to answer those questions. But, uh, you can see, you'll, you'll see the reimbursement as I mentioned. And we also included the, the basis, if there was one. And for most of the projects, we have a basis for the first year, uh, and the basis being what is the, how did we determine what this amount was? And it could have been a quote or an estimate or some kind of comparison. Um, and then there's also classification of each of the projects, whether it's a renovation, uh, replacement, uh,
Okay, so this is non-recurring, uh, on exhibit two. And we're looking at 2021, 2022. And we're, you know, the first multiple non-recurring capital is DPW, then engineering and park and rec. So we can start with DPW. People have questions for DPW. Mr. Matola?
Yeah, thank you. Um, one of these, uh, list, uh, some of these, uh, projects where we're talking about bridges, um, and I know we've mentioned it, someone mentioned it a few minutes ago. Uh, we, we do get, I thought we got reimbursement for, for these projects. And my question is, is it, why, why isn't there any indication of reimbursement on some of these projects? And I know maybe it's just a guess, but is there a reason why we don't have some type of a number in there?
Not all of them will be reimbursed and some of these costs are for design, uh, for which there would, there may not be reimbursement. It, again, it's going to depend on what the program, what the reimbursement program is and what stage the, the program, the, uh, project is at. So as you get further along, get further down in the sheet, you'll see that the reimbursement starts to crop up as they get into the actual, uh, construction or in some cases, the design.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, um, Chris DeWitt. Year over year, I'm seeing not only non-recurring capital, but under a million, but over a million, new line items for capital equipment, open parentheses, truck, closed parentheses, truck. Am I to assume that, um, that's going to come with a truck replacement plan? I would assume the new DP, the interim DPW, um, director would answer that. I would assume the new DPW, the interim DPW Director would answer that.
Okay, who's going to take on that question, Mr. Schmidt?
I'll take that question on. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, all right. Thank you and welcome.
My name is John Marsilio. I'm the interim Public Works Director. I have been reviewing a budget that I, of course, did not create. But I'm prepared to discuss items like capital equipment. And yes, we are crafting the backup for, for this request. I met twice with the fleet manager, as recently as this morning. And Monday or Tuesday, we will have the backup for that with contemporaneous prices as best we can button them down now for something we know will not be purchased until perhaps April or May.
But my question is, so are you going to hand us a 10-year plan? Because this goes out 10 years, right?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Marsilio, first off, welcome, even if the interim title. But I very much appreciate hearing that. That's, that's really good. And just so you know, historically, this board has been really great about funding things that we have plans on and really good, not good about funding things we don't have plans. So I very much appreciate hearing that, Mr. Marsilio, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Walsh and then Mr. Gerber, you had a question. Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Mr. My name is Jim Walsh, how are you? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Been waiting for you for a while, so I'm glad you're finally here.
Thank you.
So just to, yeah, I mean, this is kind of, you know, I don't want to over talk about this this evening because we have lots of things to talk about. But when I look at the exhibits, I see in non-recurring capital, trucks almost every year. When you use the word non-recurring, but it recurs every single year, I have a little bit of an issue with it. I don't know, maybe it's just Webster's dictionary definitional term problem. But I understand that we are behind in trucks. And I think from my perspective, we need a plan, which I know you're going to be working on as you just stated. And obviously, we're behind. I would suggest that you look at the last plan that was put together during the Tetro administration, which we had asked for as well, which we put into play. Because we don't think, and we, I can't talk for all of the members here, but I know some of the members, we don't consider trucks to be non-recurring. We consider trucks to be, you need to get some trucks every year. We need a plan to be a formal budget. We also, I think many of us, I'm not going to speak for everybody, would have to admit that we are behind and we need to play catch-up once again. We did that during the last administration when they made the plan. And we bonded some trucks, which we don't like to do, but we did to play catch-up. Got a plan, very first year, the other administration threw that plan in the garbage can and never followed. So I know this representative on this board would like to get a plan. I would like to play catch-up and work with you guys to maybe fund a bunch of, bond some trucks to catch-up. But I would like a realistic plan, a plan that we can follow, a plan that we know what to expect in the budget every year for trucks and what years certain things are going to be done. We have bonding policies. So when you say trucks, we can only bond trucks that are over $100,000. But in a special situation, we'd have to look at that and see how far you are behind. So I'm, you know, I'm not going to be able to give you a certain amount of money for non-recurring. I'm going to have a hard time doing non-recurring. I'd rather just do a bond. Bonding rates are low. I'd rather just play catch-up and you give us a plan that we can live with. That's my point.
Understood. I understand what you want. I'm eager to have that same report and I'll be happy to share it with you when it's finally developed.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Gerber?
Yeah, hi. On page four of five, page four of five on Exhibit 2, year 2324, I was a little surprised to see the South Benson Marina redesign, 8.24 million. I don't know if this question's for Parks and Rec or the First Black Woman's Office. But I, you know, only, I'm surprised only because of the real vehement, you know, opposition to this by, by the majority of voters. And I'm just wondering, is this actually scheduled to move ahead in 2324? Or is this some sort of residual placeholder? I haven't tracked this for the last several months. But I, I think there's a feeling among the voters, this was never going to get done this way, that it was going to be more of a maintenance, you know, sort of investment and maintenance kind of plan. So I was wondering if, if anyone's around that could comment on that?
Yes, Phil, it's Brenda. I know exactly what you're talking about. There was a lot of meetings in the beginning when I came in with the voters. I went on a similar tour that you took as well. I spoke to the Park and Rec Subcommittee on this. And we, we put this on pause. I think I talked about this during the last budget cycle. We put this on pause because we needed to, well, at the time, I wanted to delve into this a little bit more and have, have more meetings and discussions so we could come to a compromise or a different idea. But obviously, COVID hit and then everything kind of just went this way. So hopefully, we'll be able to pick that back up when we have more time to focus on it. But yes, it's a placeholder, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gerber. Are there questions on the first page for non-recurring? Okay, Mr. Schmidt, you just want to walk us through, we can go through the Page 2. Anything you want to point out to us on Page 2?
I'll leave it to you if you, if there's any, any specific questions that, if there's any specific questions that you have.
Okay, Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris DeWitt. So most of my questions are, are, must to Mr. Walsh's point, they're recurring numbers under non-recurring. So my, my next question is for, on the fire station rehabilitation. So I don't know if the fire chief's on or if this is something that Mr. Schmidt is going to answer.
Yeah, Chris, I'm here.
The chief is on.
Oh, hi, hi, chief, sorry, I didn't see you there.
Yes.
So funny, funny enough, the other day, we were, we were just having a discussion and actually praising you and your department for, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, realizing that the bathrooms had to be redone. And rather than saying, oh, let's wait till Station 1's redone, you did all the bathrooms over, got a contractor. That, we were literally having that conversation, that was very well done. Now, I'm seeing over a 10-year period, six times 250,000 and then a complete replacement of Fire Station 4 under the, you know, the over $1 million capital. So can you, can you speak to what that overall plan is for 5-ish million dollars overall?
So as we presented to the Board of Finance last year, we had programmed projects based on logical groupings. And this year, this current fiscal year, we included all the bathrooms. We have used the town's architect that was hired by RFP. And we are in the process of, in construction, for those bathroom renovations. And they will be completed in the spring. In next year's budget, you'll see in the 2020, the 2122 budget, we have $250,000 and that is for overhead doors and the vehicle exhaust, station exhaust systems in each of our stations. Again, using the strategy that logical groupings allow to get some economy of scale, do all of the light projects at the same time, build one on top of the other and, and sequence them in a way that doesn't require any adjustments or redos in subsequent projects. I remember we had conversations about whether it would make more sense to just take a station at a time. And so we presented this approach. In the station, so we already have bids or estimates for next year's projects. That is for overhead doors and station exhaust system. Clearly, we have to go out for bids for those. But at least we know that we are within the scope of the budget that we have presented and can accomplish what we have proposed to do. A part and parcel to that, we had anticipated that in the next year's $250,000, we would see the design work for projects that would include our Station 4 and apparatus maintenance. And we have not got to a point where we have defined what that, what those two projects are. Whether, as you remember, the Town of Fairfield does not own the fire station in Southport. That's the Southport Volunteer Fire Department that owns the station that we co-locate them with at that location. We had looked at options of a regional station on the town line and don't have a willing partner. And certainly, we continue to keep that option under consideration. Should, once the ECC project comes to fruition, we may, they may look differently about a joint station. So we have Station 4 and apparatus maintenance projects out there. We've gotten some estimates for building a standalone apparatus maintenance facility. That would be part of that $3 million. Clearly, the cost of that exceeds the budget that we are proposing. So I would answer your question by saying that in 2223, all of the options remain on the table because we do not have a clear path to either apparatus maintenance right now or what to do about Station 4. There are some options about staying in that building, rehabilitating that building. It would require some discussion through our legal department to, and concurrence from the board that under a long-term lease agreement, that our, the Town of Fairfield's renovation of a building that we didn't own would make sense. So that's work we still have to do.
Well, the fact, listen, if, if that's a placeholder, this is exactly what this is for. And I'm assuming that the out years, 23, 23 through 28, whatever, that 250,000, if, if you're planning on keeping that same tact, which is fixing doors one year, fixing windows, fixing bathrooms. Yeah, I, I think that's a great plan and.
Hey, we have programmed all of those projects through each of those years with the anticipation that some years may be a little bit light in budget and there would be a, a carryover into the following year. We'll complete the project before we move on to the next one. But we have included things like an elevator at the Reef Road Firehouse for ADA compliance or renovation of the second floor at Reef Road, reconfiguration of the kitchen space and storage, which we are sorely lacking on Reef Road, and renovations to other spaces in the other state, or Station 3 in Jackman Avenue, Station 5 in Greenville Hill. But we've programmed all of those projects with the expectation that the majority of them can get, would be completed within the funding that we have proposed.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great plan, chief. And I, I appreciate seeing that long-term projection. So thank you, that's, that's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Mr. Walsh has a question for the chief?
Good evening, Chief, Jim Walsh, how are you?
Very good, how are you, Jim?
Good. Is there, I don't want to waste a lot of time or your time on this right now. So those projects, sequencing of them that you have for these years coming up, like where you're doing the doors and then whatever those are, would you be able to get us a list of those so we could just kind of see them?
Yeah, I think that he listed them in a previous discussion or at least he has been, I'd like to do that again.
I appreciate it, chief, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. We do have a gentleman here from the Flood and Erosion Control Board that had asked for public comment. And I want to give the gentleman a, an opportunity to make his comment. Are you on?
Yes, I am.
Yes, sir. If you could just state your name and, and address for us, please?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm Dick Mahusky and I'm the Secretary of the Flood and Erosion Control Board. I live on Colonial Drive in Fairfield. I offer this comment on behalf of the board. We appreciate the opportunity to have worked with DPW, Engineering and Conservation to include the 13 items in the capital plan that will improve our town's resilience to coastal storms and severe rain events. The most critical items are the five tide gate restorations because these are our existing first line of defense against coastal storms. We urge you to support all of these 13 storm-related items as the plan works its way through to adoption. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comment. You're, you're the first comment we've had since March. So we appreciate you calling in. We know someone's out there. Okay, thank you. I, I have a question on, back on Page 1, on Recreation Master Plan. I'm not sure what that is. If someone can just review that? Mr. Schmidt, is there someone that can talk to that?
I think Mr. Calabrese is on. Anthony, are you on?
You're on?
You're still muted, Anthony.
Of course I am, I apologize, you know, longtime listener, first time caller, sorry. I miss the community, I apologize.
So, yeah, let me repeat the question. The Recreation Master Plan, just give us some background on that for $150,000?
Yeah, so going through, gosh, I would say just about every record I have. I've got every, every commission meeting, book and minute, everything back to just about the early 1940s. Not once did I ever see anything with, that included a master plan or a strategic plan. So I started talking to some of the surrounding towns and directors that have a lot of experience. And the one thing that they all had in common at some point or another was they had done a comprehensive master plan. So I thought that that was a perfect place for us to start, trying to evaluate, get an unbiased opinion of all our facilities that we have, whether they're parks, they're playgrounds, they're fields, buildings, pretty much everything we try to do for the town, but specifically for recreation. So I had, again, like I said, I reached out to some of these directors. They gave me some price points on what their towns paid for these things. I reached out to a couple of the different vendors that provide these services and just asked them if you were doing a town our size with the number of facilities we have, you know, what's the ballpark figure? And most of the quotes came back between $100,000 to $150,000. So that's where I came up with that number. But essentially, we're looking, I'm trying to put together a roadmap, you know, for the Recreation Department and to upgrade our facilities to keep us on par with where we could be. you know, for the recreation department and to upgrade our facilities to keep us on par with where we could be.
Okay, so my follow-up question would be, why wouldn't the town-wide facility audit plan that we're being asked to consider bonding for four hundred thousand dollars cover that? Is that not, because it says town-wide? So what, what does that cover then? And, and Anthony, this probably wouldn't be a question for you. We can come back to it. So I'll go back to Mr. Schmidt. If we're asking to bond four hundred thousand dollars for a town-wide facility audit plan, why do we need a recreational master plan for another hundred and fifty thousand? That looks, sounds like it's basically doing the same thing.
No, the, Jim, it's, it's Tom. The four hundred and fifty is specific to town buildings. The one fifty, I guess, which I am unfamiliar with, is more towards the recreation items themselves. But the, let me be very clear, the four fifty is related to all the town buildings specifically.
Good. So Anthony, and this is related to?
Parks and Recreation specifically.
Okay. Okay, any follow-up questions? Mr. Distani?
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. Anthony, how are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you, Jack.
Just kind of dovetailing off what Mr. Brown was asking, I'm just curious about this, this report you're putting together because it, it looked to me at first blush on some of these requests are kind of all over the map, for lack of a better way of saying that, with regard to what you're requesting or what is estimated, I should say, for, for costs. So will this, I guess my question is, will this report or this master plan, could it result in lower costs? Like, as an example, in my mind, there's a cost for, you know, light upgrades, that's a half a million dollars. I mean, could it, could the report you're working on result in, for whatever reason, having something showing that the light upgrades may only cost two hundred and fifty thousand? And then what is a showmobile? I, I had to ask that. Hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Yep, that was a hot topic of conversation at last year's Capital Summit as well. The showmobile is a portable stage, essentially. It's like the back of an eighteen-wheeler that surrounding towns, Stratford, Norwalk, towns like that have them, and you could basically set up stage anywhere. Board of Ed actually rents them annually typically for our graduations. So it's not something that the town has, yeah. As far as the, the first part of your question in regards to, you know, could there be savings with the plan? You know, I'd love to say that there could be, but honestly, the quotes that I've put there for all these, we've, I've used, you know, professional, either engineers or design firms to come up with these prices. These aren't things that I just pull out of the air.
Okay, so let me just stay with that just for one minute. So when there's a quote on here for something like, let's say, the post-tension tennis courts at Dwight, just that in and of itself is four hundred and twelve thousand dollars, where did that number come? It seems like, I mean, I don't know a lot about post-tension tennis courts, but it seems like a high-dollar mops made.
Well, it comes from the experience of just doing, completing our third post-tension tennis court project and working with the same company that has done the last ones. We just did, as may or may not be aware, Board of Ed just did Fairfield Ward Blake Courts. There's four courts there that were just redone in post-tension. We just did at Ludlow High School, six tennis courts there, and we are in the middle of a project ongoing right now at Tomlinson Middle School that'll finish up once the weather gets warm enough for them to paint the surface. So again, just asking the company to come out, observe those sites, give me a quote on what it would cost, those are the numbers.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Thanks, Anthony.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, you had a question, and then I'll go to Mr. Matola.
Sure. Good evening, Anthony. How are you? This is Jim Walsh.
I'm doing well, Jim. How are you?
I'm doing well. I've got a couple of questions on, starting with your non-recurring. Sorry, I lost my spot. It's right here. So what are the upgrades to Jackie Jarrell that are being proposed?
Kitchen renovation and both bathroom renovation.
Okay, and you expect that to be open for this coming year? Or is that going to be for next year? Is that for next year?
I, I would assume it's going to be for next year, yeah. After July one, I would.
Okay, and I actually see you have it twenty-one to twenty-two, so that'd be next year, correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. The splash pad replacement for, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
It is, and that is a small splash pad. It's essentially replacing what we had. It's not expanding the footprint. So, but in the splash pad industry, our splash pad is small. It was put in, in right around nineteen ninety-five, so you can do the math. It's about twenty-five years old.
All right, because last time I brought something for my son like that, it was like twenty dollars. But, yeah, I'm sure it's not as sophisticated as yours. Okay, and then the Doogie Yellow softball field lights were two hundred and six thousand dollars. Has that been on here? I mean, I, maybe I missed it in other presentations.
It wa, it was on last year's, and I'm sure Mr. DeWitt can correct me if I'm wrong. But this, this, this may be the only project that I put on here that I think every one of you will absolutely love. We've got a commitment from Girls Little League actually pay for this. This would be a net zero. Essentially, they came to us and they asked us if they want to take advantage of the town's bonding rate, but they want to fund this project. So again, it's, it's a net zero for the town. Parks and Rec Commission did approve the concept of the lights there already back in August, so it would just have to go through the funding process.
Mr. Calabrese is correct.
There's no issue with the zoning ever. I remember the neighbors all complaining about this up there when we were trying to put that up there, which I was in support of putting it up there. But there was no, there's no zoning issue, no other approvals that would need to, we would need to get in order to put the lights up there?
No, so I spoke to both conservation, planning and zoning, and I, I think even building, and none of them expressed any concerns. Obviously, the neighbors are a concern. That, that would absolutely be a concern. I think that this project would have to be vetted. The neighbors would have to be heard. But ultimately, a decision would have to be made, you know, in that.
Okay, and in what you were saying about where it would be a net zero, what you're saying is they would like us to bond it, but they would pay us that payment on whatever that, it costs the town on a yearly basis for twenty years or something like that?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. And then the only thing I, other question I had was on your clubhouse. You'd, under the longer-term projects, you had something called the clubhouse. What's that a clubhouse for? Clubhouse renovation? This is in your capital over one million dollars?
I'm just scrolling through. I apologize.
It's on page four or five, under twenty-twenty slash twenty-twenty-one, so it'll be for.
That's the, okay, so honestly, finance probably could explain this better than I can. But that's the current clubhouse at the golf course. I believe this is just when that portion of the money gets spent, not missing.
Okay, well, that's good to hear because I started thinking we were going to be doing another clubhouse, maybe a part three or something, so that's, that's, that's good. Okay, that's all I have for you, Anthony. Appreciate your, your, your answers. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I think Mr. Brown missed it again.
You might need to take over again.
I think it was Mike Brown disappeared.
Does look like that. Let me see. I have a question for Anthony, Jim Walsh. Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Matola?
How are you? Anthony, the Recreation Master Plan, and you're probably going to make this pitch when we're going to vote on it, but is it, is it, is it to look at what programming you offer? I mean, what is it?
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. I, I, I will give the, I was going to give the, the full pitch probably in, in February, but I'm, I'm glad to just kind of give you thirty thousand views.
Give me a real quick pitch. I don't want to waste a lot of time. I really don't. Is that what it is?
That, that's, that's exactly what it is. It's basically to look, look at an overview of everything we do, whether it's programming, it's the station, facilities, the fields, the staffing, literally everything. And then hopefully identify any efficiencies or efficiencies that we can make in the programming and help us plan the way that we're budgeting these types of projects in the future. I mean, I've, I've got some of the playgrounds on, on the waterfall chart that I know are in need of replacement. Honestly, almost every one of our playgrounds in town needs to be replaced. But I can't come before you guys and say, hey, I, I, I need ten million dollars to replace every playground in one shot. So I've got to prioritize those, and obviously, that's what these meetings are about. But I hope that this plan that I'm going to do, and I know that these companies do, they'll come in with an unbiased eye and say, this is what you should do, and this is the priority.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Iacano?
Hi, Mr. Calabrese. Thanks for being here. I'm Pam Iacano from RTM District Eight. I think the idea of a master plan is excellent. I'm really glad that you've put that together and went out and looked around at what other towns too. My question may or may not be for you, but do we typically bond plans? Have we done, I know, you know, you've, have we bonded something, studied stuff like that before? Is this normal or this is new? I know for you, a plan is new, but is that typically what we do?
I'm hoping somebody from, yeah, I'm hoping somebody else can answer that one because I don't know. I know we've done plans for the town. I just, I couldn't tell you. I just know the, the threshold of price of it.
Right. I like the idea of you doing it. I'd like to support something like that. I'm just questioning the funding for it.
So I think, thank you, Ms. Iacano. That's a good question because as far as, now, I can remember we have not, but I'm told there's examples of when we, when we have. And Mr. Schmidt, I'm hoping you can answer that question.
We have looked into this. It's been, it has been done in the past. There are a couple of occasions. There was one for where we did, I guess you could look at them the same, a study, a plan. So the Rooster River Detention Area Study was done for, in two thousand, in twenty-twenty-one for three hundred and twenty thousand. And there was a WPCA Facility Study Plan that was done in sixteen, FY sixteen, for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So there, it ha, it has been done in the past. There is precedent for it. If I, if I might, it's Tom. In the pla, in the instances where we have funded them, they're typically tied to capital projects as opposed to, you know, Anthony's doing a more fulsome plan, and I agree, it's a great thing to do, but he's trying to do a more fulsome plan that looks at program as well as facilities. So I, I'm sure there'd be a discussion point over that. But in the past, when it's been tied to an actual facility, there have been occasions where we have, but to look at the programs and stuff, I don't know. That sounds more operating costs based on the policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
That's, thank you, Ms. Iacano. Thank you, Tom. Yeah, I think we have to see if there's a way to link it to our policy. I'm, I'm not sure if there is. Mr. Walsh, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah, and I, and I, I know that, or at least I can see that Mr. Hurley's on. And I guess when we did the Rooster River plan, I thought it was tied to the whole project. And is that part of the whole project? Is some of that reimbursable through the state if we do the plan as, as part of the bonding?
Hello, everyone. It's Phil Hurley. The Rooster River Study, that, that was really designed, designing of the detention ponds and the bids and specifications because we're going to go out to bid, and like you alluded to, it will be a cap, there'll be a capital project associated with that. But unfortunately for that, right as of now, we are unable to get any grant money for that type of project. We're still looking, though.
Okay. My other question, I guess, is back to Anthony, is why couldn't that study be funded through your revolving fund? Because there's times where you have to give the town back money under that agreement, and it just seems to me that that revolving account, and it may not be that big now because of not having, because of COVID and not having the funds flow through that, that once did. But to me, it seems like that would be something that would be perfect for the revolving fund.
It's definitely something that can be considered down, down the road. Like you said, the funding right now is not there in that account. But, yeah, there have been years where we've had, we have had excess funds that were kicked back down. Theoretically, it could work that way.
Okay, I mean, I think that would be a better way to do it, even if we waited a year or so or see how things come back because as we're being stressed on, on bonding, I mean, the bonding that we're looking at for capital projects from last year to this year has, I think Mr. DeWitt has told me, has like doubled. You know, now that we're at three hundred and eleven million dollars over ten years. Last year, it was in the one forty range or one fifty range.
One forty point?
You know, anything we don't have to bond because of new things that have come up, and especially with the fill pile and not knowing numbers, to the extent that you have a revenue source that might be able to assist in that, greatly appreciated.
Understood.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm looking at the, the policy here, and, and I think it's probably not bondable. Additionally, the new website design, we have, we have very specifically said all technology spending must be expensed through annual budgets with the exception of hardware and software directly associated with the expansion of classrooms, buildings. So I also don't believe new website design is probably bondable. But I, but I, I don't think the master plan, anytime we've done master plan kind of things, we haven't bonded them.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Okay, so this will come before us again at some point. Any further questions on Exhibit Two? Mr. Matola?
On, on page four, what is the, I don't know if Mr. Marsilio can answer this because I know he's new. What's expanding Burt Mansion about? We just spent a fair amount of money on that a few years ago to renovate. So what, what is that? That is a one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. And, and just what is that all about? Can someone answer that question?
Yes, I asked that question today in preparation for this. And it has, the advocate for that project is the museum, and it's their desire to put a permanent space off the rear of that building in lieu of the present tent or in addition to the present tenting that's there to increase the, the, the space for whatever, for all the uses that they use that building for now. That's the best answer I could get.
So thank you for your answer. Is, is this, is this a wish list? And that, this isn't to you, Mr. Marsilio. This is to maybe the first select woman or anyone in the room who wants to answer this question. Is Exhibit Two a wish list for what department heads want? I mean, or is it something that you support, Ms. Kupchak, doing all of these things? Because that, that, that's my question.
So, so John, yes, it's obviously a wish list. We've got everything that is. We've put everything that has been identified by either department heads or things we know about. And I was talking about that earlier. We're gonna put them in a prioritized, um, way. But, um, and I just don't wanna clarify, the, a lot of the renovations that were done at Burr Mansion, a lot of that money came through a grant at the History Museum Applied Park, um, because it was a historic building. But, um, yes, they talked about the solarium. I mean, we've talked to everybody. I know Tom and Tom both did, so I did when I came in. I mean, it kinda makes sense to put something on the back of that. They're always doing a tent, and we do make money off the, you know, off these rentals. So I mean, it's, it's a nice thing. It's something they wanna do, and so obviously, we're gonna put everything in there, but we're gonna prioritize the critical items, um, you know, first. We're, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna put a solarium before we get the mushroom, you know, stop growing in our town hall and, you know, critical needs. Critical needs first.
All right. And I know, and so, so, so when we're voting on this in February, and I think we mentioned this earlier, thi- this is gonna change somewhat with, with more of what priorities that you want. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that's a fair statement.
All right. Thank you. I have nothing else.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Ms. Kupchak, don't? I just, uh, Ms. Iacano and Mr. Walsh have a question. I'll get to them. I just want to define wish lists. Like, what does that mean?
Well, what I just said, we wanna put everything we are identified, and as I spoke earlier, um, about in the PowerPoint, you know, the critical needs, the, you know, the wants, the necessities, the functionality, the modernization, sort of different priorities. So we wanna make sure that everybody in town knows everything we've identified, either a critical need or something we think would enhance, uh, our community in some way, shape, or form.
Okay. I'm having, uh, connection problems. Ms. Iacano, I'll go to you.
Thank you. I just, could somebody give me a quick refresher on the, the profiting at Burr Mansion? Where does that go? Does that go to us, or does that go to the, um, Historical Museum? Are they just gonna get a management fee for that? How, can, can someone just refresh me on that?
It goes to Historical Society. We have a lease with them, um, that we're actually been talking to them a little bit about. Uh, and we're gonna have some long-range plans with the Chamber, the Garden Club, Historical Society, kinda talking about, um, a master plan that was done a while back for these old grounds here, and how we might try to look into the future about trying to spruce up this entire area, you know, over the, over a period of years. But yes, they pay their staff, they pay the event planner that plans the events there out of the fees and things of that nature.
Did, did they offer up if they're willing to cover some of the costs of this, or we would work that out with the management lease?
Yeah, absolutely. This is, this is just something they identified that we wanted to put on, or none of the details have been hammered on.
Okay. And it's, and the, and it's because it's our property. It's the town's property.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Got it.
Mr. Walsh?
Ms. Kupchak, thank you very much for your comments. Um, yeah, I, I, I'm glad it's kind of a wish list item. Um, I mean, we're spending a lot of money. We have a lot of bonding on the books for catering kind of facilities between Penfield, Jackie Darrell, which we need to renovate again. We have now new space at the clubhouse. And we just did, I know they, they might have gotten some grants, but we spent, uh, and I, I would ask to see if maybe your administration at some point can get us the number. I thought it was close to a million dollars, if not over it, for renovation, uh, putting an elevator in, doing a whole new, which they advertise as a state-of-the-art commercial kitchen, and some other spaces. And now they want another million dollars more. It just, it just seems like it's getting out of control with the amount of money we're putting on the bond, bonding. So, and I know you know all this, and I know there's other projects, and you've mentioned that, so, you know, thank you for that. And I know you will prioritize this stuff. But I mean, I hear about this, and, you know, DeGurbe raises a good point about the air conditioning. You know, you start weighing these two things, and you're like, quickly, you're like, you know, I'd rather be getting some kids some air conditioning than putting more catering space available. Um, so, you know, I know this is stuff that you guys have to prioritize amongst yourselves, but it just, it just, I, I was shocked to see this number after, I mean, we're not even done paying for the, the recent renovation of Burr Mansion and the catering facility there as it is. Now, they seem to be making this other request, so, I, I don't know. I guess we all talk about it. Maybe we need to get Mr. Jelly before all the town bodies and kinda understand what he's trying to do. But, you know, if this thing's not paying for itself, I don't know how we, how we spend more money doing this stuff. And that's just my-
Well, again, I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that all our town boards and bodies had a list of every single thing. You know, I mean, it's good to better know everything. It doesn't mean it's getting done on any time soon, but it's good to just kinda have it on your, you know, your dashboard and you know what's going on.
I appreciate, I, I appreciate that.
You know, down the line, it could be way down the line, and then the details of that is hammered out at a later date. But ob- obviously, I, I wouldn't put something like that above, uh, more critical needs.
Okay. I appreciate that, and maybe after you guys kick it around a little bit, you can push it down further in the year, so it's not right in front of us, 'cause it kinda makes it seem like we may be doing this, and, and I think it's on the twenty-one slash twenty-two year list. So, um, I, I just, you know, I, I understand, and I appreciate you putting placeholders in there, but if something's not prioritized, I guess maybe we should probably push it down the line a little bit, and, um, so that only the stuff we know is gonna be, hopefully being done, is, is done. But I, 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 I know you're working on it, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Chris DeWitt. Um, yeah, uh, Ms. First Select Woman, I, I, I wanna say, I appreciate seeing things in here. A wish, I'd rather have ten things showing that we're going to use them, and then not, and taking them off or moving them around. So I, I, I think more is better on that, so I appreciate that. But this makes me, this makes me worry about slide number four. In twenty twenty-one, 'cause this is the year where, this is the current budget with, with, with which we're executing right now. And a lot of the projects, in fact, all but two projects are proposed. And I very much support the Old Town Hall renovation. Uh, Giant Steps, I think is gonna be, is gonna move forward. There's a lot, and there's a lot of bridge, uh, you know, um, uh, proposals in there. So how, how would we handle that in the current budget? Uh, it's, it's, it's gotta be, my gosh, twen- twenty million dollars that's not in the budget today. Is, is that accurate?
Um, well, it's my understanding that we put, well, overall, we put this whole capital plan together so people can have a, a view, and then we're gonna go back, look at our budgeting, look at what we wanna prioritize as an administration, what we're gonna put on non-recurring, what we're gonna request in bonding. I mean, those are still discussions yet to be had. Um, so we're not there yet. Obviously, Giant Steps is coming up. That's something we all know is gonna be on the, on the deck next week. Um, and, and we're supposed to do a presentation, I know, this evening, um, a little bit about that, uh, so that we can get ahead of the meeting next week, so that you guys have some information, uh, about that one. So we know that one, that one's coming. But we haven't had our discussions on, on where we're, how we're moving these around, how they fit into our budget yet. Uh, we have, we're just gonna be getting that process in the next couple of weeks, uh, putting, putting-
But isn't, but isn't the, the, isn't the numbers, and I, and I understand Giant Steps, right? But twenty twenty-one's the budget we're executing now. I, when, when we vote in February, we'll be voting for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we're gonna be able to fund within the budget we're executing right. I mean, that's what that's saying, right? That the ex, the budget we're executing right now, twenty twenty-one, we've got like twenty million dollars of unfunded projects. I mean, that is what that's saying, right?
It's saying that there are a limited number of projects that we could do this year during the current fiscal year. Uh, and there wouldn't be any, any budget impact, uh, if they're, if they are done through bonding. There wouldn't be any budget impact on the current year.
Oh, fair, no, good, so, uh, fair, fair point, right? But, but these, but these wouldn't be part of our February discussion. These could be coming throughout the fiscal year, correct?
Or both. So it could be both.
So some of these might, might end up going into the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Okay.
That's all.
All right. Yeah, great. Yeah, that's a good point. It's, 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 it's bonding versus, uh, budget. I get, yeah, you're right. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Any other questions on, uh, Exhibit Two? Okay, I'm seeing none. Mr. Schmidt?
All right. Moving right along, we'll go to Exhibit Three. Uh, this is a ta- this is a table of the, uh, what we've talked about a, a couple of times now, the debt service as a percentage of the budget. Uh, you saw the, the graph of it. There's another graph after this, but this is, uh, and just to clarify what this represents, uh, it shows the past eight years, and then, starting with this year, what is in this, what is in this, uh, plan and what is, what's in these needs right now, um, as it is laid out by year. So that's, that's what this, this amount represents. So it's the same, same amount that you have seen in the chart that was in the, uh, in the PowerPoint, and the same, uh, basically the same thing that you're gonna see on the, the chart that follows in the next page.
Right. Now, this is something, Mr. Schmidt, that's gonna get, uh, you're gonna have to rework this when you get Board of Ed updates and fill pile. And so I'm not sure if there's gonna be much questions on this, because we're gonna be looking at this again in about six, eight weeks. But it's gonna look different.
Honestly, I think, uh, e- every one of these sheets is gonna have to be updated.
Yep. All right. So let's move on from Exhibit Three. Your next capacity forecast, we've seen, you're gonna have to rework that as well. Um, Exhibit Five?
Exhibit Five is the changes. And so what this shows is the changes from the plan that was, uh, that came about October twenty nineteen, and this plan here. Uh, and the, the changes are broken down into different categories. Uh, in the first category, it could be that, uh, a project was removed. Uh, it could be that it increased in the amount, that we did another estimate of it, and the amount increased. But I'll differentiate between that and the next category, which is a three percent increase, which would, would just be sort of an inflationary, uh, increase if we, again, uh, and this came up earlier, if, uh, if there's a project that did not go through, had money attached to it, uh, and it's getting pushed out, that there's, we tack on three percent. That's, that's another category.
All right. So Mr. Schmidt, you know what I think we should do? Why don't we just start from the top and just kinda work our way down? We have capital projects from two thousand nineteen and December twenty twenty, and then you, you, you lay out the changes, right? So-
Let me, uh, let me, let me clarify that, because this includes all of the projects. It's not by year. This is, this throws all the, all the projects that, uh, are in the plan, all the, all the projects over the ten years, and-
No, I understand. I understand. Well, you're showing, you're showing the changes-
I'm sorry.
Between what we had, what we were showing for October two thousand nineteen and December twenty twenty.
Correct. And so the, the, that total amount, um, that was in there in October twenty nineteen was eighty-four million. Uh, and compared to this current plan, it increases to one oh six, for a total increase on the town side of things of twenty-two million dollars.
Okay. Then let's go down to remove. If you could just walk us through that.
So remove, it would be one of the, any of the projects that, uh, were previously, in the previous plan, and were, uh, were taken out for whatever reason. We have, uh, town building improvements, asset management. We've talked about the, uh, the plan to do a study and then to fund, uh, there's an earmark in there for five million dollars for that. So those, these individual projects were removed. Uh, and in some cases, there may be a reimbursement associated with whatever the project is, and there, there's a, uh, an appropriate adjustment to the reimbursement.
Okay. And, go ahead.
So the next, next category is the, is projects that were increased. Um, and you can, if you look at the, you match up the columns, there, first two columns are capital projects, and the second two are for, uh, non-recurring projects.
Okay. Are there any questions on, in this category with these projects? Okay. Let's go to increased, um, three percent category.
Yeah, pretty straightforward. Just, uh, again, projects that were previously in, in a given year and got pushed out in years or more, and, uh, to be responsible, we added on an inflationary factor of three percent.
Okay. And then on p- Okay. On page two, you have category new to this year's plan.
Right. And these are, these are new projects. These are the, uh, the ones that were added compared to the plan that was out in October twenty nineteen. So what you, uh, so the previous list that went through was just all of the projects, and these are all of the new projects in this, in this section of this list.
Okay. Okay. And then reduced, approved, approved and bonded items prior years, last year's plan.
Right. For the, uh, self-explanatory, these were, uh, were reductions because they were bonded already. They've been done to a certain extent.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments on Exhibit Five? Ms. Charlton?
Thank you. In, in the next rendition of this, is it possible to add the year onto these line items? Uh, so for example, new to this year's plan, it looks like the first two items are coming up in fiscal twenty-two. But it, it was just a little bit difficult to follow how this schedule was tying into the, um, you know, the listing by last year. Yeah, that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Sure. We can put parentheses in after each project. Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Any further questions? Mr. DeWitt?
You know, um, just a, it's, it's, it's more of a comment. You know, um, we, we talked early on, I, I think Mr. Flynn wa- was talking about, you know, how the, we, we've got, we've got three components of this three hundred and eleven million dollars, right? We've got the Board of Ed, we got the town and the, and the water pollution control. And it's very clear to me this year, probably more than any other year, that this number at the bottom, it sounded like, like a huge number that we're increasing, you know, last year's budget by twenty-two million dollars, but it doesn't even, it doesn't even catch us up. And, uh, the Board of Ed number- And the Board of Ed number is going up a substantial amount. I can't find that data right off, right up really quickly here. But I, I, I think we really have to start thinking about the town side here a little bit. And I, I, I'm afraid to say that the Board of Ed side might have to start slipping a little bit. It's just, I, I feel like this year more than any, that, you know, the town is doing a good job of highlighting real big things that, that we've been missing. Yeah. Listen, we, we, we have to cut somewhere and it might, it might be on the Board of Ed, on the Board of Ed side for that, for that capital piece. And that's just an observation, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dewitt. Mr. Testani?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure if someone's here from the police department, but I happened to notice that there's a half a million dollars since air conditioning is one of the, you know, sort of hot topics. I'll use a little irony in my question, hot topic, you know, with the air conditioning, but it says HVAC, I guess, right? Half a million dollars? Is that police department new HVAC? Is that within the building? Is that the only, the only improvement that that building needs? I'm just curious about that number. What, what consists of that number?
I think that will go to DPW. Mr. Marsilio?
So this has become a critical element of that building. We have hard estimates for the replacement. So far, it's...
It's just air conditioning, Ben?
Pardon me?
Just the air conditioning?
Yeah, it's the, it's the rooftop units, it's the cooling tower, it's the RTUs, and it's gonna require some structural improvements to hold a bigger cooling tower on the roof. So it's got very extensive. And our building maintenance foreman has asked me to highlight this as the most critical element of his entire ask this year. So I would ask you to give this great and serious consideration.
Of course, I just was curious, was there anything in addition to that, that the police may be looking for, for that building?
Well, you know, we're responsible for the, for the building maintenance. And if they require other items, I know there's the numbers in there for radios and there's numbers probably in the operating budget for vehicles and other items, but as far as major capital items, over $100,000, this has emerged as something that's critical for the, the facility itself.
Mr. Chairman?
Very good thing.
On the line is on to, he can, if you have any questions, Jack, maybe?
No, thank you, Brenda. Hey, Chief, I just wanted to make sure we were covering all the bases with whatever the department may need. You know, I just, you know, obviously, again, I saw the, the lot for the air conditioning. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything else that, in this case, the DPW or Marsilio was explaining why that cost was there. And certainly, I understand it. I just didn't know if there was anything in addition to that, either the building or the department needs that would be, could, you know, considered for this type of, what we're considering for this particular plan.
Thank you, Jack, facility from police. Our, our building is in really good shape, short of the air conditioning. So there, there's nothing facility-wise that we are seeking at this time, but our air conditioning has been a struggle over the last couple of years. And we appreciate DPW's, all, all their efforts to keep us running in the short term.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks, John. Welcome again to Fairfield, Mr. Marsilio.
Okay. All right. I think that's it for Exhibit 5. Okay, because this is something else that we'll, we'll come back to. And on the next document we received was the waterfall. And again, this is gonna change. So we don't need to spend a lot of time on this unless anyone has a question about the waterfall itself. I think we're all familiar with this document. But again, the numbers we see here are gonna change. And so we can spend more time looking at it at that time. But, Ms. Charlton?
Thank you. And just to be clear, when you say the waterfall document, you mean the Phoenix Advisors on the top right, the one that showed?
Yeah.
Yes. Could I just ask, the numbers are sort of in the ballpark, but, but not that familiar to me. Would it be possible to, in the next version of this, show, show how the, the debt reconciles to our audited financial statements? So I think the last set of financial statements we have are 2019, but our, our 2021s are supposed to be done soon. So that, that outstanding number would, that would be our June 30th debt in the financial statements plus any bonds we've approved since then. Could you guys, I guess this is for Jared, maybe just quick put that together so that we can understand what the running total is? I know I don't always have this in my mind as we, you know, approve things piecemeal. So that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Charlton.
You're, you wanna see retired, you're, you're looking to see retired funds?
No, no, just the outstanding. So the, you know, the, the total liability that we have for debt on our, on our balance sheet in our financial statements would equate to this outstanding principal presumably. So that would be the number as of June 30th plus anything we've approved since then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Mr. Gerber, you have a question? You're on, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, quick question about the borrowing rate. And I, I don't know if I'm looking at the right thing, but I thought the, the current 20-year rates for AAA would be about half of what, what you're selling here. Does, does that make sense? It's about 1.2% now?
It could be around there. This is, this is an estimate like anything else up here. These are estimates of what the, what the amount would be. And this is, those amounts were determined by our financial advisor.
Okay, so these are looking out, they're looking for big, big increases back, back out a year from now or so. And, and it, it sort of made me think about something. We, we, the RTM used to have to approve defeasance, you know, refinancing of, of bonds. And I think we're at historic lows right now. So I haven't seen anything in about a year, and I'm just curious, are you, are you refinancing debt at this point? Or, or is that something you're waiting on? Or are you doing it without, you know, without the RTM? Curious.
That, that was done earlier, earlier in the year. I believe it was in April, it was before I was here. And likely, there will be, I suspect there'll be another round next year.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, thanks, great, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gerber. Any further questions? On the waterfall model? Okay, seeing none. Before we go to Giant Steps, Mr. Schmidt, is there anything that we did not cover that you wanted to cover?
No.
Okay. This was good practice run. All right, thank you. Ms. Kupchak, did you want to give a, a small presentation on Giant Steps and just to get us a little familiar with what your plans are for that property if these bonding resolutions were to go through?
Yes. Thank you. So I, I know most of you toured the facility recently. I know, Mr. Brown, you toured it back when we, you and I were invited back in the summertime. So the history of this was, we were all aware that the central office, school administration was looking for a long-term solution on the alternative high school. They were thinking of purchasing the property they currently were at. And then I know a lot of you viewed, went toward that facility. I had, I had, had spent a lot of time in that facility over the years, speaking to young people there as a state representative. And the building is obviously in, in not good condition. And I guess the cost estimates that came back to the central office administration proved that it was going to be quite expensive to repair and renovate that building due to roof issues and asbestos and other things. And the fact that the diocese, I believe, was asking a higher price than the school district originally thought. The superintendent and chairwoman of the Board of Education reached out to me and asked me if I would consider it, that they were gonna look at it, they were thinking about it, it was on the market, Giant Steps unfortunately was closing its doors. So we went toward the facility, but at the time, we thought it was gonna be about $10 million with the sort of price at the time. And I thought that was quite steep. And so we, the discussions kind of went away for a little while and then they came back up again. And the school district really wanted to pursue it and the price was more reasonable. So we entered in discussions and the town attorney reached out to the attorney for the property. And so those negotiations commenced. So as you saw, as, when you toured the facility, it's obviously a nice, large piece of property in Southport. And the building is basically turnkey and a much nicer facility than the students are currently at right now. So I was really encouraged when I did see that because I did think that that was a really valuable asset for our school district and for those students. I did tour the outbuilding that most of you probably saw. Obviously, it's in pretty bad shape. According to Angeles, there are, it's structurally sound. It's had a Phase 1 done on it. We were, the town and school district were doing Phase 2 on both buildings. And so we don't have any plans right now. I thought this would be something our town bodies would discuss. You know, we'd get some estimates to see, for example, would it cost to A, demolish that building, or B, make it a usable space for whatever? We could have that discussion based on what those cost estimates would be for either one. But we, I know we do need some storage space for our DPW equipment. As you saw in the illustration of the pictures, this facility that we got from state years ago in town facilities is in, in, in god-awful shape. And it's actually worse than this one. And I know we do, I've talked to our DPW people, we do need space. So that could be a, could be a potential use. And as a, as a community, we can have those discussions, but it potentially could be used for soccer field. There's a lot of things I think we can talk about as a, as a town, as elected officials and, and roll those things around, get some prices and, and make a decision down the line. Similar to when John Sullivan purchased the property of where Burr School is now, you know, he purchased it, purchased it a long, long time ago with the intention of someday using it as a school. So I think this is a valuable asset. This will be a valuable purchase for our town. It is a prime piece of property. I think that number one priority obviously is to give our alternative students an opportunity to have a, a quality facility. But I think the secondary priority is to maintain this in town hands. Obviously, we're all aware of the 8-3G developments that are happening all over our town and continue to happen. And actually, Southport's been under siege recently with a lot of these. And so I think it's a, it serves, serves a dual purpose for us to maintain this property under town control. And if you don't have any questions for me, I, I guess I'll hand it over to the superintendent or Mr. Angeles to answer any sort of technical questions on operating costs, move them over or the state studies. And Attorney Baldwin is also on the line to talk about any of the contract issues.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kupchak. Are there any questions for Ms. Kupchak at this point? So, so what I'm, what I'm hearing you say is the idea right now is to purchase the property for 4.9 million. It would move Walter Fitzgerald over at the end of the lease. They would move in and then we would consider what to do with the rest of the property?
Absolutely. Because I think we need some, we need some estimates and I think as, as a community, we need to have discussions.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Mr. Dewitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This first select woman. So you mentioned soccer field, so, so that's all great news. Do, do we have confirmation from conservation and everyone else that it's, it's actually, you know, buildable land?
Right, so there are, I have, had, that has been looked at. There is some wetland areas around the, the space, but a lot of it is buildable.
Excellent. Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Matola?
Thank you, Brenda, for that presentation. I know we're gonna give more information on this next week. I mean, for, for me, I, I think it sounds like it's a, it's a really good deal and, and I think what we do with the rest of the property is something that we can take a fair amount of time to consider and give it a real thoughtful look at, especially given what we just went through with our presentation tonight. We, you know, we have a, we, we're, we're gonna be spending possibly a lot of money on a lot of things. But that doesn't mean that we don't purchase this property. As you mentioned, John Sullivan bought the property where Burr School is located, I think in the 1960s. So I think it's a good asset and, you know, I'm looking forward to the presentation next week on it. So thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. If there, are there any further questions for Ms. Kupchak at this time? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Cummings, I did not know you were gonna stay on and Mr. Tally and Mr. Peterson. So the Board of Ed is still with us, so I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Cummings.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brown. This is a, an important topic and we're very appreciative of the opportunity to speak to the, to the property. As, as Ms. Kupchak spoke about it, we see a lot of opportunity in the current Giant Steps property. That's really the Board of Ed, the Fairfield Public Schools concern. It is, to use her words, a really turnkey facility, as you've seen when you've, folks who have toured it. We see it as a significant upgrade over the current St. Emory's property, both in terms of what is gonna be needed to make it function as a, as a school worthy of our students, but also for long-term, as a long-term investment. It, it, Mr. Papa George can speak to. The, the systems in it are relatively new. The roof has a relative few, few years on it. It is already air-conditioned. And so we see a lot of opportunity to bring the program in. It, it is less square footage than St. Emory's, but it is perfectly fine for the needs of the Walter Fitzgerald campus and students. So I don't know if there's further questions or if we wanna have Mr. Papa George speak in more detail at this point. Really leave it up to, to questions.
Mr. Papa George, you have anything to add at this, at this time? We will hear this again next week, but if you have anything that you'd like us to consider between now and then, please feel free to do so.
I don't think I have anything to add at this time. I think everyone's toured the facility or if not, they are welcome to sign up to do the final tour coming up before your talks next week. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have specific to the building.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tally or Mr. Peterson? Anything to add? Okay, thank you. Ms. Vitali or Mr. Peterson, anything to add right now?
Jeff, I don't know if you were going to say, but I'm just, I'd like to thank Ms. Kupchak for being so open when we came to her last spring, and for her continued support of this program. And thank you to everybody who toured the property over the last week or so. We're very excited about the possibilities, and we're hoping that we have your support. As Mr. Papa George said, there'll be another tour scheduled this week for anybody who hasn't toured and was still left the opportunity. It really, the school is really move-in ready. In addition to providing a really wonderful space for our students, I think there's a lot of opportunities just in that building for possible uses in the evening, for town meetings, you know, and after-school activities on the weekends. There's a playground there. It could be used in the summer potentially for parks and rec. So it's excited, excited about the possibilities. And for the abandoned building, I agree with Ms. Kupchak, you know, the school could probably come up with some ideas for it. But we brought the idea to her, appreciating the other needs of the town, and look forward to having a conversation about how the abandoned building could be used. Thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for anyone on the Board of Ed? Okay, I'm seeing none. The Board of Finance sees this on the 16th, I believe. It's Wednesday. Board of Selectmen, Ms. Kupchak, you are voting on Monday, the 14th?
Yes, yes. We have a presentation this week. And that's what we're trying to do here. We're, you know, have the people tour it and have a discussion during this meeting. I know it's kind of unconventional, but we are trying to move along because there are other offers coming in on this property. And we want to make sure that we can, if it passes, get, get it done as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking at Mr. Baldwin is still on. If anyone has any questions for our town attorney, Ms. Charlton?
Thank you. I don't know if this is for Mr. Baldwin or not, but in the, and I know we're going to talk about this further next week, but in the summary of the costs that we were provided, there are some moving costs to move out of the Walter Fitzgerald campus. Are we liable in any way for restoring that building to any, any condition? Or, I mean, can we just, can we just walk out of Walter Fitzgerald and leave it? Or is there anything that should be provided for any conditions of lease to, to, to bring it back to a certain state? And we have to get a question that came to me as I look at the analysis of the costs. So if, if that's maybe something...
Okay, thank you, Ms. Charlton. Who can take that question on? What are our responsibilities to the property as we exit?
I was just going to say, I, I can briefly talk about that. I've had a couple of conversations now with the Bridgeport Archdiocese, the current owners of Bayrow Street. Verbally, we've discussed possibility of moving out. They've not expressed any concerns about the building. They know that over this past school year, that we've actually taken on the maintenance of the building to keep the school running for them, to eliminate the cost for them to maintain a building that they're not currently occupying. So I think there's been a lot of working and a lot of understanding with them. So I don't anticipate any problems or concerns when moving out, but we will definitely continue to follow up and open communications with the Bridgeport Archdiocese.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Testa, you had a question, a follow-up?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I briefly mentioned this during the tour, and I'm not sure when the allocation of the money, maybe this will be in next week's discussion, but over $200,000 to move seems quite excessive to me. I, I just didn't, was curious, is that number negotiable? I know we're talking about what our liability is when we leave, but the cost to move, you know, is there a way we can maybe streamline that? Thank you.
I think, thank you, Mr. Testa. I think Mr. Papa George can break that number down a bit for us.
I can. Actually, there's, there's a detail in the book that we provided, the capital book that we had provided. There's, it's really based on numbers that we've seen and used for schools. And actually, our moving of maintenance last year gave us a lot of that information. We've also worked with vendors to come up with the pricing. The biggest cost of moving, as you'll see in the breakdown, would be the security upgrades that we would need to perform to bring it up to what we, the district standards. I would be hesitant to go into more detail about the security upgrades, but we could talk outside of a public meeting if we required to.
Hi, this is, can you hear me? This is Attorney Baldwin.
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Charlton. I, I, I think that Mr. Papa George answered the question perfectly. I just wanted to let you know that I did hear you. And, and yeah, there are no issues associated with, with our leaving the St. Emory's building as of July 1st of next year. So there are no issues associated with that, no, no anticipated costs.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
And, Mr. Chair, if I could just follow up. I did read, Mr. Papa George, the explanation, the explanatory text of what my plan was, is there a way to streamline it? Again, I mean, over $200,000 to move is, is my own personal opinion, excessive. I just, is there a way to find out if there could be some potential cost savings? I'm asking. And maybe not for tonight, but when we take this up for consideration. Thank you.
I, I think, you know, Mr. Papa George, it's, it's really, it's not the move, it's the upgrade of security that's costing the cash. And that's, that's what I, that's more than half of it, right? It's, it's not, it's not the relocation of the items. I don't even know if you're taking anything. But so to classify it all under moving is, I think, is, is not really telling us, you know, what you, what we're spending on. It's upgrades. It's really upgrades other than moving.
Some security upgrades, yes.
Okay. So if we break it down in that way, maybe it'll be easier to follow.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Vitali?
And just, Mr. Papa George, this also includes securing the abandoned building, correct?
Yes. We, we included some security features for the abandoned building. Currently, it sits wide open, well, not the building itself, but the area around the building sits wide open. And the past student population with Giant Steps, it wasn't a concern. But with the high school population that we'll be bringing in, we, we consider it an attractive nuisance at that point. So we wanted to make sure that our students will remain away and safe from the abandoned building.
Mr. Brown, my comment, I could just, if I can, I can, on page 11 of our proposed capital non-recurring projects, there is a breakdown into your, to the point you raised, the actual moving cost is $14,305. The security upgrades are $114,500. Fencing around the abandoned property is $75, $7,533. Landscaping is $16,875. And then fiber optics, $35,000 with a contingency of $10,000. So, so that's on page 11 of the plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cummings. So security, it's upgrade, it's fencing.
Yeah, the moving cost is relatively minor in that figure.
Thank you. Ms. Marion?
Yes, thank you. I'd be particularly interested in hearing next week on the specific opportunities really that this, buying this piece of property presents. So in addition to moving Walter Fitzgerald, what are some of the ideas that the, both the Board of Ed as well as the town might have? Number one, for the space in the school, and number two, for the other piece of property, just so that we can have some talking points. For example, in the school itself, how much space, if any, might be available that wouldn't be used by the students at Walter Fitzgerald? In other words, there was some discussion during our tour about potential space for ECC or not, or for other programs within the school. So I'd be interested in just having those options laid out for us as talking points. In addition, I'd be interested in having the potential options of how to use, you know, the playground space, and then also the, the building. For example, there was some discussion of, you know, if we renovated this building, maybe the central office would be, you know, using that space. I'd just like to have that kind of listed out options. I know it's preliminary, but I think it will help in our discussions next week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Marion. Any further questions, comments, or something we'd like to see by next Wednesday? Okay, I'm seeing none. Thank you to the Board of Ed. Thank you, Ms. Kupchak.
Thank you.
Okay, so here's, here's where we stand. We know from Exhibit One that the total cash flow required stands at $311 million, and that's the direction we're headed. We know that's going to increase once we get this update from the Board of Ed. And all the other schedules will be adjusted as well, including, including the waterfall. From the town, we'll have a better understanding of the non-recurring capital and capital projects they plan on doing for 2021, and also for the next 10 years, because it will include the Philpau. And we look forward to hearing from the Board of Ed. Mr. Papa George's new schedule that he's going to put together for, for the next 10 years is going to be radically different. So we might as well take the one we have, and it sounds like we could put it in the wastebasket and wait for him to come back to us. So we'll be meeting sometime before February, maybe even at a February regular meeting. We'll go through this, we'll see what's on the schedule. But we can't go much later than that. So if there's any, any further questions or comments tonight before we go to item number four, which is to adjourn? Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Dewitt, seconded by Ms. Charlton. Good night, everybody, and thank you.